Construction and we do acknowledge that during construction erosion is a concern. And the stormwater pollution prevention plan was prepared, it was reviewed by the village engineer Eve. And that whole plan is prepared to address the concerns about erosion control. Some of the things included a salt fence, stabilized construction entrance, soil stockpiles. And then during construction, once construction begins, the applicant is required to have weekly stormwater inspections that comply with the DEC regulations. And the inspections are then sent to the municipality. So they're able to track erosion control measures and make sure that everything remains in place and in good condition. So I think that those measures mitigate any concern about erosion. That's the whole intent of this whip. Um, the third item is the wetlands because there will be construction in the regulatory area. Uh, there will be approximately 3,375 square feet of the wetland regulatory area which will be disturbed. Important to note that this is the regulatory area, this is not the wetland. We are not disturbing the wetland itself, only the regulatory area. Um, the area during construction is going to have salt fence protecting the wetlands. For long-term protection of the wetlands, there is riprap proposed at the end of the stormwater discharge. At the outlet, so it reduces velocity as the water is directed to the wetlands. Um, the whole wetland regulatory area is um, being reviewed by the DEC. They have seen it, we have been back and forth with them. Um, because any disturbance in that area is at their jurisdiction. Um, I think that it is important that now the only portion that is in the regulatory area is a corner of the building, um, which once it's built, there really won't be any disturbance because it's the back of the building where they will, you know, versus the area that will have pedestrian and um, car access. And then the other disturbance is really for the greeting initially and the discharge for the drainage. So once construction is done, it's an area that really will just kind of stay as it is. Um, it'll, we won't be in a area that has a lot of ongoing activity. Um, the next item that was brought up was pesticides and herbicides. Um, there may be minor use of those items to just in a general landscaping concept. Um, we do not anticipate that affecting the water quality. Um, a contact CDS pre-treatment unit is proposed for this stormwater mitigation and those units are designed to remove any floatables and solids from the runoff. And they aren't accepted practice in the state for this, for purposes of cleaning the stormwater. Um, so we do not anticipate any negative impact from those minor uses. Uh, the next item that was brought up is flooding and there may be some change in existing drainage patterns. But the site has been designed for zero net increase and runoff. So the runoff should not exceed the existing condition. Um, in both the pre and the post-construction um, circumstances, the discharge point remains the same. Um, this stormwater pollution prevention plan really goes into the depth and full description of how that all functions and uh, Eve reviewed that. The last item was the private wells. Um, at the last meeting, there was concern from the public about the potential impact onto private wells. Um, and what are we doing to prevent an impact on the wells? So I think one of the things that's important to note is the other project that was brought up at the last meeting where supposedly there was well testing and everything. On that particular site, from our research, it appears that there had been prior um, dumping and there was prior, some prior contamination in that area which influenced that testing. Now, the area that they were disturbing was not the area where the prior contamination had occurred. But there was reason to, you know, they, there wasn't, they couldn't prove that the disturbance, that the contamination was limited to just that one tiny speed spot, even though that's where it had been shown previously. So monitoring wells hadn't, there was more reason to do so.
If I can, if I can answer that, um, I believe the concern, um, and uh, to be uh, completely open and transparent, um, uh, the applicant's attorney reminded me of this. There, there was uh, a concern as to whether or not it, there, there was a possibility that over time, the um, um, there was leachating, for lack of a better term, uh, of the contaminants that may have um, made it so that it traveled from uh, its initial location to other locations. Am I using the proper terminology? Rachel?
Yeah, I think that that's, yes, that makes sense. And so there was an initial spot of contamination which caused other concerns. In this case, we don't have that as a starting point. Um, in addition to that, to make people, you know, if that, they want more of a comfort level. Um, due to the slope of the property in the existing condition, a lot of the runoff is running straight off into the back to the wetlands. Some of the runoff is infiltrating, but we are running, we're basically running parallel to where those private homes are on Sage Street. So it's not going, the, it, our runoff isn't going basically side to side. It would be going down the hill to the back to the wetlands. Um, in the proposed condition, we are collecting our runoff. We're pre-treating it with the contact CDS pre-treatment, treatment unit. And then the runoff is going to be detained and infiltrate into the ground. Um, but all these practices will be, you know, approved by the DEC. They're standard practices for stormwater. Um, and they will be treating the water so that it is in a clean state when it infiltrates into the ground. We don't anticipate any change from the, you know, in the patterns compared to the existing condition. So we do not see that there'd be any reason for there to be an impact on the wells. And there certainly would be no reason to monitor the wells because of the general construction activities. Um, and those were the items that were brought up from the EIF.
And those were the items that I had most concerned about on their initial submission of their part two. And so they addressed those at this point in time.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask some questions?
Yes, Eve, please. You are next on my agenda.
Uh, just in response to what um, the project engineer just stated. Um, in terms of pesticides and herbicides, if in fact they are required to be applied to establish your vegetation, is it safe to assume a licensed contractor who specializes in pesticides and herbicides would be retained?
Yes, I think that it is safe to say that.
Okay, and then in terms of a private wells, you've noted that there weren't any hotspots or needs with concern because you didn't investigate, you didn't um, find any type of existing or pre-existing conditions that would alert you to the fact that there may be pollution on site. So is that implying that a phase one investigation was performed to demonstrate that the project didn't have any types of these hotspots on it?
We, I don't believe that they did a full phase one. Um, we have gone through some, done some preliminary research. There's been no indication, um, it has had a very minor use for a extended period of time. Um, the majority of the site has been vacant for an extended period of time. On the only real use was on very close to Route 59. Um, where the building is and there was a small parking lot behind it. Um, but there has been no indication from the research that we did.
Do you have data on what? The use historically has been on site?
Um, my personal knowledge is that the most recent use was um, like a small uh, photography studio. Um, and it seems that it would have been residential prior to that in the past.
Okay, so it doesn't raise any flags with having any type of use that would have potentially contaminated the site?
No, not like it was a laundry service or gas.
Or dry cleaner.
Dry cleaner, yeah, not, no, there's, best of my knowledge. Um, those are the uses that I know.
Okay, great, thank you. That answers my questions. Well, the, the first set of my questions, I should say.
Okay. Right, so I think in terms of the environmental impacts, right Eve, that, that they've satisfied your, your questions at this point?
Yes, I have no issues with secret or the environmental impacts, that's correct.
And they have satisfied my additional questions at this point as well. So if the board wishes to issue a negative declaration, I can have one prepared for next meeting for your review and approval.
What do you think, board members? Are we okay with the negative declaration? It is unlisted, it's an unlisted action, that's how it's listed.
I think so. My only question would be, once we open it up to the public, it's going to be more common about the wells.
Yeah.
That could affect us.
Well, I just wanted to get a general consensus before we open it up to the public.
I think my feelings are the same as Dennis's.
Okay. If there's nothing else that we want to cover with the consultants or anyone, we can open it up to the public?
Well, I have a few, Mr. Chairman, I have a few review letter. I don't know if you want to handle it section by section and go through secret first or go through all the review letters first and then I'll open it to the public, your choice.
Uh, why don't we hear the review letters first because it may answer some of the questions from the public too?
Sure, that makes sense. Right, um, Valerie, do you want to go first or should I go first?
Um, it doesn't matter. I just have a couple items, so if you want, why don't I just quickly run through? I think yours is a little, yours are a little bit longer. Um, just in terms of, just to highlight to the board, the county referral, there are, um, the applicants requesting the, the planning board to override comments one, two, and 18. Um, comments one and two in the county referral refer to zoning variances that were obtained from the zoning board of appeals. And comment 18, comment 18 refers to the turnaround space provided on the site plan. So it is my recommendation that the board uh, override these three comments as you continue your deliberations with the site plan. Um, the other couple outstanding comments I just wanted to highlight is that I do think the applicant needs to look at the lighting plan again. Um, I do think the lighting, the lighting actually encroaches um, over the property lines more than 0.1 foot candles. So I think they would, I, they need to take a look at that and then revise it if necessary. And then, um, other than that, they did provide uh, sign details this time. And I do believe that those meet the zoning requirements and landscaping is robust and it does provide a diversity of plantings. And those are my remaining comments on the site plan at this point.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes, Eve, please.
Okay, I did review the latest set of plans as well and have drafted a review letter dated February 24th. Item number one does refer to the loss of the one unit as Rachel has already stated. So we have ABC, unit D is now missing, we have E, F, G, and H, so there's one less unit. Um, I did have a question regarding the use of these units. I noticed unit A does specifically state accessory office space, but the remaining units don't indicate any office space. And it's been our experience that even though the warehousing is the primary use of the space, there's typically a small corner or a small office set aside for office within the warehouse structure itself. So better to designate it now, um, rather than later. So this way it can be accommodated in the parking evaluation. And it should be noted that there is excess parking available. So in fact, there is office, a small amount of accessory office space within the warehousing space. There appears to be sufficient parking to accommodate it. But I only ask that you note it now on the plan so we don't have any problems down the road. Um, and essentially that is my number two regarding breakdown of space. Number three, notes the 58 parking stalls are required and 68 are proposed. So you have excess parking. Number four is regarding the relief from the parking stall. Our code does allow the, the planning board to reduce the parking stall width to 8.5 feet if those stalls are designated as employee parking, and that was shown on the plan. Uh, number five indicates the wheel turning radius for the fire truck. And that's been uh, clearly designed and accommodated with the turning radiuses out to Route 59. It should be noted though, since the property does have access from Route 59, New York State DOT review and approval is needed. And as I believe Rachel stated earlier, that they are currently working with the DOT to accomplish that. Number six is relief regarding the um, loading berth size. Forty, forty feet long by 10 feet wide is required. Their minimum width of the loading berth is 15.2, which is up by the first building. The vast majority of the loading berths are 16 feet wide. And as has, as was noted, the depth of the space has been increased to 25 feet. Previously, they were shown as 25, as 20 feet. So this is an improvement since the last revision of the plan. Um, I believe it was already discussed regarding the um, the ability for the delivery trucks to park in this area and the ability to maneuver around it. Number eight is regarding sidewalks. We have to be aware of ADA accessibility, ADA ramps, detectable warning surfaces. And that um, pretty much pertains to the building that's adjacent to Route 59. That's where the sidewalks are located. So a little bit more detail is needed there, but it doesn't appear that that should be a problem addressing it. Number nine is the SWIP.
Is there enough, uh, is there enough road widening to allow for that?
I'm not sure what you mean, road widening.
To allow for uh, the sidewalks.
Oh, the sidewalks are fully on-site, so it doesn't require a road widening.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's a matter of just providing the five-foot area for the maneuverability. But it doesn't appear that that would be restricted in any way in terms of.
Would that require DOT approval?
Well, I was referring to the sidewalks that were on-site because the parking stalls, the ADA accessible parking stalls are on-site.
Okay.
So it's the ADA path is from the interior parking lot to the structure itself. The sidewalks along Route 59 are moving in a linear pattern. So they are required to be four feet wide. And there is a note regarding ADA ramps at the crossing, but those are easily accomplished. And yes, the DOT would weigh in on that and the DOT would approve that.
Right, and DOT also provided comments uh, in February. And there are a number of comments that they have to address um, from the DOT at this point as well.
Right, right. Um, okay, I think I'm up to number 10. That's just a comment, population tests, that's current, um, typical comment. Uh, number 11 is regarding that um, field inlet that Rachel referred to in terms of the existing flow patterns on-site. And the existing flow patterns are being maintained. Um, I just had a question regarding how they were going to be conveyed, but that's a technical issue that could easily be addressed. Number 12 is simply a comment, stormwater management agreement will be required, everyone's aware of that. Uh, 13 is again going back to the ADA stalls adjacent to building A. Number 14 is regarding the retaining walls. We need some additional details and design for that, which is typically detail that's providing at the building permit uh, stage. Uh, number 15, guide rail and fence. So I just needed a bit of clarification because there's a lot of um, activity going on the plan. It's a little difficult for me to see. So you have various walls in locations, three different locations. So we need to clarify which walls have guide rail, which walls have guide rail and fence, and which walls only need fence. Uh, but that's just sort of a housekeeping or drafting issue. Uh, number 16 is regarding the driveway profile. And that'll go back to the DOT review as well. But typically, the first 20 feet of the driveway is graded downward toward the road. And this would keep the drainage from Route 59 staying on Route 59 rather than coming on to the private property. Number 17, actually 17, 18, 19 all refer to, and 20 all refer to the landscaping plan. Uh, so due to the proximity of the residential uses adjacent to them to the west, a privacy fence was added and vegetative screening was added. Um, I had just noted that if there are any existing trees that are able to remain, they should be noted and worked into the plan. And the trees that have to be removed due to the improvements shall be shown. And we defer to Valerie for the actual review of the species to make sure they're appropriate and the number and the size to be sure that they produce the buffering effect that's required to protect the adjoining residential zone. As you know, we have a residential use adjacent to the property, though it's not a residential zone. But to the rear of the property in our adjoining community in Montebello, there's a residential zone and a residential use. So there is an extensive buffering landscaping plan to accommodate that and provide privacy and screening for that neighbor. And I agree with Valerie, the lighting plan still requires a bit of work. There have been intensities shown around the building. We still need to know, again, just administrative work, who prepared it? They should sign it, title block needs to be revised. I wasn't quite able to see where the poles were located and, and how many they were. And I felt the lighting levels appeared to be a little bit low at the driveway access, but I'm not so sure that the plan took into account any existing lighting along Route 59. So that's something the lighting consultant should weigh in on a little bit. Uh, we need details of the lighting and we need specifically to address the lighting along the sidewalk so people have safe access either in the early morning hours or the later evening hours, especially during the winter months. Uh, 26 is regarding the stuff, the sign, I believe Valerie touched upon that already. 27 is regarding the sign, 28 is a New York State DOT detail that the DOT will weigh in on. Um, 29 is details, 30 is details. Uh, same thing, 31 is details. And 32 and 33 are regarding the wetlands that are currently existing to the north of the property. So it is labeled as a DEC wetland. And as Rachel noted, they are coordinating with the DEC to get the appropriate permit for the encroachment into the buffer. But in addition to that, there's a village wetlands permit that should be applied for during this planning board process. And that's for an encroachment into the 100-foot regulated area. So since this is a DE6C wetland, um, the DEC would sort of take the lead on it and the village would follow.
And I just want to make one note of that, Eve, because in their response to one of my memo questions, they um, they noted that they did not need a local wetlands and they felt that they were exempt from it because of a particular provision in the code, which was um, section 20611. And I reviewed the code and I do believe that section 206-4 indicates that one is required. So I do, they do need, I mean, it is my belief that they need the local permit. And uh, we disagree with the applicant on that position.
Yeah, the permit is definitely needed. Um, as I said, the DEC isn't, as it is a DEC perm, uh, wetland, they would take, the DEC would take the lead and the village would sort of follow. But yes, a permit is definitely needed from the village as well.
So, um, the, the, the issue with regard to the wetlands that I brought up, which is, I mean, I understand we have a regulated buffer, it is subject to the wetlands law. But my understanding of the wetlands law, and it says it right in there, is that you don't need to make an application under the wetlands law as long as what you're doing is shown on a, a, a site plan or a subdivision. In effect, the site plan application acts as a wetland application so that a separate application is not really necessary. Um, I know that's the way it's, it's done in a lot of municipalities. I'm not saying that we're exempt from the wetlands law. Or my only point was that the review and approval of these plans will act as sort of the wetlands application and wetlands permit for the project. So um, that was the only comment that I was making, that we didn't need to make a separate application.
I would agree, sort of, that the site plan application addresses that as well. But what we've been doing, just maybe belt and suspenders, is to also note in any resolution of approval that a wetlands, just to be sure that it wasn't overlooked, that the wetlands permit was issued as well.
But if in fact a person. There's a fee for the wetlands permit.
Suzanne would know better about fees than I. But the way I think the code is written is if in fact there's an application that comes into the building department that does not need a planning board approval or zoning board approval, it still needs a wetlands approval. But Paul, I would agree with you that during this process, it can all be handled at the same time.
I think it, I, I think you're both right. Um, it could be handled at the same time, but I still think it requires a wetlands permit uh, and uh, the fee to be paid. Um, I, I, when you uh, read the legislative findings and intent, um, it makes clear uh, why uh, the village uh, is requiring a wetlands permit. And then when you go to the section, and I'll tell you, regulated activities, which is 206-4, um, C, erecting any building or structure of any kind, roads, the driving of pilings or the placing of other obstructions, whether or not they change the ebb and flow of the water. But that um, is clearly a regulated activity. 206-5 talks about activities permitted by right. Uh, I couldn't find any of what's being proposed uh, um, as uh, being as of right. Uh, and then 206-7 talks about procedure, applications for permits. Any person proposing to conduct or cause to be conducted a regulated activity specified in 26-4. And I already read what that was. And I already read what that was. That's the erecting of any building or structure, the roads and placing, changing the ebb and flow of water. Shall file four copies of an application for a permit with the planning board as provided in this section. Such application shall include the following information. That's where it probably dovetails with the requirements for site plan approval. But it does go on to say in six, so 206-7 seven, no, 206-76. In the case of applications affecting water retention capability, water flow or other drainage characteristics of any wetland, water body or water cause. The planning board may require the inclusion of a statement of the area of upstream or downstream watersheds. Although I think I heard Rachel say that you're not affecting any of that. Is that accurate?
It goes to the same discharge point.
End up in the same wetland, so it goes to the same wetland as it does before.
There's no increase in flow. It's going back. The site was previously draining toward that wetland pocket and it's going to continue to drain to the wetland pocket.
Okay, it requires a public hearing, which the site plan application also requires. And then it talks about standards for granting the permits. The application of the burden of demonstrating that the proposed activity will be in accord with the policies and provisions of this chapter. In granting or denying or limiting any permit, the planning board shall consider the effect of the proposed activity with reference to the public health and welfare. Planning board may grant the permit subject to such terms and conditions as it shall reasonably impose upon finding that such activity is not contrary to the purposes of this chapter. Said board may also, in its discretion, permit any activity otherwise prohibited by this chapter to be done except with respect to property designated on the state wetlands map or otherwise regulated by the state, provided that the planning board determines after investigation that to prohibit such activity would cause undue hardship, blah, blah, blah. Fees, 206-10, an application for a wetlands permit fee shall be, for wetlands permit, shall be accompanied by a fee in accordance with the fee schedule adopted by the Board of Trustees. Then the next section, which I think the applicants relying on, is 206-11. And it's labeled applicability. And it's a, A, the requirements of this chapter shall not apply to any work shown on construction drawings or improvement plans for subdivisions or site plans approved by said planning board. That would be counterintuitive. If, if the interpretation is, well, if you're applying for site plan, you don't have to abide by any of these requirements.
I didn't say that, Dan. My, what I pointed out to is I recognize that we're we're disturbing the 100-foot buffer and we're disturbing a regulated area. My only point was that there's no need to make a separate application for a wetlands permit under the wetlands law because your review of the site plan basically is, stands as the wetlands review and is even more thorough than the wetlands review. If I'm making an application for a project that is, is going to go into the regulated area, but I don't need site plan approval. I then, in that case, I would have to apply for wetlands permit. There's no doubt about it. This process through the site plan serves the same purpose as the separate wetlands permit. And that was the only point that I was making is that we don't need to file a separate application for a wetlands permit that the review of the site plan will serve the same purpose and serve as in place of a separate wetlands review under 206. So I mean, I recognize we have to meet the regulatory requirements and we have to show that we're protective of the of the wetlands. And the review of this site plan will do that. But if you want it for housekeeping purposes, if you want a separate permit application and four copies of the site plan to put into another file that says wetlands permit file, we'll be more than happy to do that.
I think that's the way we've done it. And I think that's the intent of the ordinance.
Well, I just don't know how you, if 20611A says the requirements of this chapter shall not apply to work shown on construction drawings or improvement plans for subdivisions or site plans approved by the planning board. I just don't understand how that is to be ignored and say, well, forget that language.
I'm not looking at it as being ignored. I think it'd be, it could be read differently than you're reading it. It could be subdivisions of site plans that were previously approved. This hasn't been approved yet.
Does it say that, though?
Shall not apply to any work shown on construction drawings or improvements for subdivisions or site plans approved.
Can I ask a question of the two lawyers?
In the past tense.
Can you take this offline?
I'm willing to do whatever the board wants to do. I pointed that out. We will certainly submit a separate wetlands application and resubmit the plans so that, you know, we got all the i's and cross all the t's.
It may be easier than us having to take it offline. Eve, to your recollection, this has come up before. How has it been handled?
Previously, it was handled by simply submitting a wetlands application with the site plan package. Not necessarily a separate submission. And then in the resolution of approval, just noting that a wetlands permit was also granted. So it was, it was noted with an application, but not with a separate submission. It was still part of the site plan submission. But in this instance, in particular, since you do have DEC wetlands. It is clearly noted on the plan and that a DEC permit is required. So in either instance, whether the village issues the permit or not, the DEC has to have an approval. So I think submitting the village wetlands application would, would just sort of clarify it and keep it consistent with what we've been doing in the past.
That, we have no objection with doing that. We'll submit one.
But I'm not suggesting you have to make another complete plan submission.
We'll submit one next week.
Nor am I.
Excellent. Anything else, Eve?
Yeah, sorry. I have one more letter, but it's really brief.
Go ahead.
As Rachel noted, I also reviewed the stormwater pollution prevention plan. And I just have a few minor comments. And it's again, pretty much administrative. This was the final set of plans to be included. Everyone knows that. The past three drainage, stormwater runoff should be addressed. Rachel mentioned that briefly in her presentation. The only new comment is I would like to see a concrete washout area added to the plan because quite often when we go to do inspections, the contractors just don't know where to go and how to handle it. This project will require a stormwater maintenance agreement. The stormwater checklist shall include the maintenance of all of the components of the system, which includes the outfall to the wetlands. And depending upon the manufacturer's items that are included in the stormwater design, the cut sheets should be added. So in the future, the contractor maintaining the site will know how to handle those particular practices. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Any questions from the board members? I have two questions for the board. The parking.
Hold on, Mr. Chairman, before we do that. We have other comment letters that I think should be read into the record, in particular, Tolman Fire Department.
Okay. Let's do that.
I don't have it.
Not to put you on the spot.
Yeah, you are. I have it handy. Hold on.
It's not easy either. There were two of them.
Hold on a second. I have to get the other file. What are you?
Let me, yeah.
I'm looking at what I scanned and I don't see it in here.
Okay, hold on.
You're talking about the letters from the last meeting?
Hold on.
I don't have a new letter, I don't believe.
I don't either.
All right.
That was the previous meeting.
Yeah, it was the December meeting. They didn't do another review. The only other letter is Valerie pointed out from the DOT comments.
Yeah, the only outstanding review is DOT to my knowledge. And maybe Rachel, you can confirm that?
The one that I know of.
They didn't ask for the building to be sprinkled?
You're thinking of 282.
82, Dan, and they.
They sent the letter for the sprinklers.
No, Dan is correct.
Oh, yeah?
So the Tolman Fire Department wrote two letters. The first one was in November and then they followed up after they saw the revised plans with a letter dated December 15th. Where they were satisfied with the hammerhead turnaround for the fire truck turning. But they were requesting that all the buildings be sprinkled.
And the initial letter, they were more vociferous with requiring that it be sprinkled.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's the same, it's the same paragraph that they have in both their November 2nd letter and December 15th letter. Which says it's recommended that all the buildings be sprinkled, that a separate fire alarm system be provided for building A, buildings B through F, building G and H to avoid any confusion. As detailed plans prepare, the proposed location of the fire department connections. Fire alarm panels and Knox boxes should be shown. So that was their comment. Our response to that comment was that you know, whether these buildings need to be sprinkled is a determination of the building inspector based upon the New York State Building Code. And if the New York State. Yeah, New York State Building and Fire Code. Otherwise known as the Uniform Code, requires that these buildings be sprinkled because they need to be sprinkled. Based upon the code, we'll sprinkle them. But if they're not required to have sprinklers under the New York State Uniform Code, then we don't see why we should have to sprinkle them. So we.
I personally have no objection, I personally have no objection to that.
Lou, do you have anything to say?
No, not right now. I haven't had a chance to review the fire code without a fire inspector. I just haven't had the time.
But you agree that it would be appropriate before you issue a building permit to make that determination. And if it's required, they'll have to do it.
Definitely. And we'll have more details by then. So it might be a little easier to figure it out.
Correct.
Okay, anything else, Dan?
Suzanne, am I missing any other agency comments? I don't think I am.
No, I mean, the DOT commented on February, I think it was second. But the problem is that was the comp, they finally commented on the plans that I sent in October for the November and December meeting. And now we are waiting for comments on the recently revised submission, which I haven't received as of yet.
Well, we could put those at the back of the minutes, right? Attach them to the minutes for the record.
Because it was quite lengthy. It was a page and a quarter.
And if anyone wanted to foil them from the public, they'd be free to do so.
Yeah.
And for that matter, any of the memos, plans, application materials, to be clear.
Okay, I just wanted to ask the board members, they asked for a reduction in parking width for the employee parking to eight and a half feet. Does anyone have a problem with that?
I had a two-part question with that. One, has the board ever reduced that in the past? And the second part is, if I heard correctly, they have more parking than they needed. So why not just make them standard size and reduce, eliminate the space?
So we are looking to have the certain spaces with the reduced width because even though we exceed the parking requirements, there isn't a specific requirement for warehousing. We went with the one space for 1,000 square feet. But it isn't really specifically defined. And we know that there was concerns about not being enough parking at Spook Rock Industrial Park. We felt that we would rather have a few extra spaces here. And if we're able to get those extra spaces by having the narrower spots, we thought it was worth the trade-off.
Okay, so the first.
Mr. Chairman, if I might add, the code allows for the planning board to reduce it to eight and a half. It's written into the code for employee parking. And the philosophy behind it is that there's not a lot of in and out traffic. So the employee comes in, they park, they stay the day, and then they leave. As opposed to say a shopping mall or something else where there's a lot of in and out. There may be loading and unloading of vehicles. And that's why the stalls are required to be a bit larger. But your code does specifically allow for 8.5 feet in width for employee parking stalls.
All right, so did the board ever invoke that right in the past? And also they want to reduce the length as well, in some of them I heard.
Well, no. It's not, sorry, Rachel. The, again, the code allows, depending on the design of the parking stall, the length of the stall may be anywhere from 17.5 to 19 feet. So the 17.5 length of parking stall is where you have a a vegetated area in between the stalls. And it allows for the overhang of the front of the vehicle to accommodate that existing, the additional length. If you have parking that's like head-on, head-on to head-on parking, then it needs to be 19. Or if you have parking into a fence or into a wall or into a building, then you need 19. But all of the stalls that are shown on the site plan is reduced to 18 feet. All have that vegetative strip in front of them, allowing the vehicle to overhang. So again, it meets the design criteria that's outlined in the Village Code.
Got it. So it's really not a waiver of anything.
So you actually don't need to issue a waiver for that, no.
Okay. And then the ones that are, that have the narrow width are not the ones that have the shorter length.
Correct.
Just based on the locations of them, so.
Right. So if you, if you look at all of the spaces with the, the one foot shorter length, they all have vegetation in front of them. If you look at the spaces that are labeled 8.5, they're specifically labeled for employee parking. So it meets the criteria. So it meets the criteria designated in the design standards in the code.
Thank you.
Okay, but the other thing was the loading berths. They want to make them a little bit shorter.
Um, the loading berths are actually listed in the zoning section of the code, so I think that's a variance, but I defer to the attorneys on that. And yes, the zoning, the zoning code defines a loading berth as 10 by 40, and they've provided minimum 15.2 by 25. But as I read it, that's in the zoning code, so that requires a variance, but as I said, I'll defer to you guys on that.
Yeah, there's a there's a certain provision in your zoning code that grants the planning board the authority to waive the requirement, which is why we.
Okay.
I think it's 21054. I'm taking a look at it again.
Yeah, I have it pulled up now. It's 21054A. It says the planning board may modify the minimum requirements where necessary to ensure proper circulation and traffic safety, or where such change would not create future difficulties in the event that the structures or uses are changed to any other use permitted by rate in the district. It's giving you the flexibility, and as we said, we have a note on the plans restricting the size of the trucks that can um be used on site. Correct, and that's why we specified on the site plan the limited sizes of trucks. Um, the fire trucks are, we provided the turnaround that shows that they can maneuver through the site, but that's a different scenario than the trucks that are coming for deliveries, and so the delivery trucks are restricted in size.
I just want to get a feel of the board members, how they felt about those two things.
I have no questions. Thanks, John.
Okay. Uh, if there's nothing else, I'd like to make a motion to open the public hearing portion of it.
I second that.
Thank you, Joe. All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? None.
If anyone wants to speak from the public, can you either raise your hand, or I open the chat, if you could put your name in there, so I know you want to speak?
I don't know where the chat is, but I'm trying to get into it.
Shayna, I was looking for you. I'm saying, where's Shayna?
Yeah, I'm here.
Hi.
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 All right, so hi, everybody. So welcome back. I hope everybody's been safe for this amount of time. I have a number of people that are in the chat now that are from State Street, so that's why you see a bunch of people that are here that haven't been here in the past. Um, since the last board meeting, I've actually been in contact with about 75% of the individuals that live on State Street. Um, and this is pretty much our concerns, kind of similar to Ms. Mancuso. I noticed on the plans, just the updated version here, that it seems like that back building and provided spaces for employees look to be encroaching a little bit more on the properties that are near uh 20, 16, and 12 State Street. Um, and since then, since the last meeting, I've actually talked to pretty much all the the members of State Street about where their wells are and where their wellheads are. Just please note for the board that their wellheads for 20, 16, and 12 Street, uh 12 State Street are approximately 25 feet from where they will be unearthing and building. So I am concerned, back to what I was saying about spacing in the back, it looks closer to the back property as well as the wetlands. I didn't see about what the latest EPA memo had said about all the stuff that we had been concerned about. I am also interested to see if there will be any room for a traffic light near State Street if conditions continue to become dire. Uh, I'm still concerned about the lack of what I've heard about the wording for the future of 22 and 24 State Street, per the other board. They were adamant of trying to word something to make sure that in the future, there would be no parking lots or anything that has been added to projects like this with this owner or future owners, so I'm really concerned about that. I haven't heard that in a while. I am still concerned about the lighting plan and the fact that it does encroach in the back by us um on State Street as well as Lackawanna, especially 20 State Street, which the owner is present here in the chat. Um, it will be backing pretty much her house, and pretty much people will be looking into their house, so that's a huge concern. The sound, the loading docks, again, still a concern. Landscaping in the back, it really does not look as full as it could be for the buffer for Lackawanna Trail, which I believe the person's in here for that as well as on State Street. Uh, just so you know on record that the runoff does go and feed right into a runoff from the Ma'wah River. I would love to see if there's an illustration of the current path, because that does run into my property, and it does swell between two, three, and even four times uh the amount of water that is currently there on the regular basis. I would love to see if there was actually data from that soil test that the the that the, I'm sorry, I don't remember your name, had said that they could did a little digging. Also about the steep slopes, there is one of the highest water tables in the area, in the county, at the end of State Street, per the company that actually dug my well that I just was in contact with in the last month. So I am concerned, especially with the swelling of water and the down flow, especially since the water does come down State Street. Uh, the erosion control, there are 40 to 50 feet trees in the property of 22 and 24 State Street. Currently, because of, uh, you know, the the dire conditions and the fact that it does flood, the root systems are very temperamental. Um, we had another 40-foot tree fall in the last few months, in the last season as well, and those are all actually still there for you to peruse if you'd like to come down and take a look. Other things, drains, there are no drains put in place at at the bottom of the State Street. I have called to inquire about putting something in further. Um, not to mention, on a side note, with this past storms, we've had damage to our property from the plow on three different properties. A fence was taken out, a mailbox was taken out, and all of my masonry was taken out in two spots along my property, as well as I still can't back out of my property from all the snow, so I would hope that somebody would contact me about that as well. I did make a call into the village. Um, also, what will you do to improve the wetlands and planting of the trees that have been downed in the area that you're not building? Is there a mandate for that? Uh, will there be any removal of uh the current structure that has been damaged, that's been sitting there for approximately 10 to 12 years or more? Um, also, what do you do about all the dumping that has taken place over the years, not by this tenant or this owner, but that is sitting there, including tires and other major big forms of debris? Uh, also, the pond that was directed on that that plant, the blueprint, is directly behind 20 and 16 State Street, so that please note that. Last page, I promise. Um, again, now those employee spots in the back are now directed towards the homes of State Street, as well as the spots are in the loading berth now in that back building is very, very, very close to 20 State Street. That's a huge concern, since there are small children that live there, and for various reasons, I don't even want to get into. What uh what about the current trees that are there, dead and living? Um, also, last but not least, with those pesticides and herbicides, the mentioning of that, that does put me on high alert. Um, I have had my water tested, and it's good at this point, but again, I would love to see for the members of State Street, something in there, a clause that if something does go wrong, that that it somehow be documented, whether it would be the fault of this disturbance or not. And I would love to know where that, the cleaning of the storm order would be. It's okay, baby. I'm almost done. And last but not least, I implore all of you, after a heavy storm, to come down to see the conditions of the wetlands, especially with extra flooding. There's going to be lots of more mosquitoes, and with West Nile in the area, that is a huge concern. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else? I don't see anyone in the chat, and I don't see anyone else raising their hand.
So that's it?
That seems to be.
I'm sorry, one last thing. If I would love to meet on the side to understand, get a better understanding of the project. I don't want to be just somebody that comes out and complains, because I understand that, you know, as somebody that owns this property and a lot of stuff that's gone in to try to plan for this, I would love for us to maybe have a town hall on the side for maybe the members of State Street to have a better understanding and work together to try to better the project, as well as uh put our concerns at ease.
Okay, I think that's it. I don't see anyone else.
All right. The hearing at the March 25th meeting at 7:30 PM, I assume, unless we are able to meet together, that'll be Village Hall.
Okay. Need a second, please?
I'll second.
Thank you, Joe.
Joe, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Um, Mr. Chairman, may I ask, um, with regards to the seeker situation? Do you do you want to authorize me to produce a negative declaration, or do you still have some environmental concerns that you would like the applicant to uh provide you additional information on?
I think we are ready for a negative declaration, so if you can draft that, we can do that at the next meeting.
Okay.
There's no other board discussion on that. Everyone's good?
So.
Yep.
All right. So Paul, I think you got your neg deck coming soon. Are you on mute, Paul? You're on mute.
Oh, I'm trying to unmute. I'm sorry.
I think it's. Sorry, sorry. Thank you. Thank you very much, and we'll we'll see you on the 25th, and and hopefully we'll have our neg deck, and we'll have some further comments from the DOT and the DEC, and we'll be able to respond to those. But last but not least, I know that Shayna brought up a number of issues. I think we've been going through a lot of them during these planning board meetings, and I think that's where they need to bring their questions up so we can get them addressed. Um, I I based upon the questions that I've heard that were relevant to this project, I think most of them have been addressed um already, and they're on the plans. Um, I know she has some concerns about State Street and its being small, and and maybe it's not plowed properly and maintained properly, but that's not something that we have control of, or um whether we can do anything about. All our, all our stormwater runoff is going to be appropriately managed, and it's not going to impact the wetlands. We're certainly not going to make the situation any worse. We're going to have zero net uh increase in runoff, so even though there are some planned problems, it sounds like, with that some of the properties are suffering, we do not contribute to that at this time, nor will we after this project is built or during construction, based upon all the protections, stormwater management, and other plans that are shown, so.
Although she did raise lighting, I don't know if she was on Shayna. I don't know if you were on when Valerie, our planner, raised the same concerns. So, um, that is something that they will have to address.
No, I'm aware of that, which is why I said most of the stuff that was applicable to our site, you know, we're already aware of, and we we will address. I have one.
She just had a question on the on the trees. Which ones are going to be disturbed, which ones may die because of the construction, and if they would be replaced, et cetera, I assume that's maybe on the plan already.
Yeah, I think he brought it up. Any trees that are going to remain, they got to note them in the plan and the rest of the new plantings. Yeah, I I don't know if there are any trees proposed to be saved um over in that area. It's really going to have a retaining wall and parking, but we'll we'll take a look at it, and we'll show whatever we can on the plans to give the board all the answers with regard to the landscaping, so there's adequate comfort.
Um, and then I just wanted to bring up, I know that she had a concern about the um employee parking spaces that were closest to State Street before at the end. Um, they aren't new. Um, I think from her her description, it sounded like they had been added recently. That's not the case. Um, I looked back, and they're on a plan from December of 2019. So we've had them for about two years. I think that they got added when we took off the parking off of State Street. So they've been before you. You've seen them before. That parking is not new. It wasn't added for this version or anything, so I just wanted to make sure that you knew that. Um, we hadn't changed that. That portion of the site has remained the same um since we got rid of the parking from State Street. Um, but we will, I'm going to work with the lighting specialists so that we can address the lighting concerns, and we will look at the trees. Um, and that was from, I think, Eve's letter too.
Okay, thank you, Rachel. Okay, any else? Thank you, Paul. Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, board members. Have a good evening.
You too. Hi, Paul. Hi, Rachel.
Hi.
Hi, Larry.
Thank you.
All right, next we have Dunkin' Donuts, 14 North Monroe Road for a proposed drive-through listing Dunkin' Donuts.
Hi.
Okay, Dan, I have a question.
Sure.
Before we start talking about traffic control and getting gas and where people are parking and they're not parking, what are we trying to accomplish with this application tonight?
I have no idea.
I mean.
So this.
Very. Very.
Yeah, this application is definitely going to need zoning board of appeals approval. Um, not to mention that the county has already indicated that they disapproved the application, so therefore the planning board would have to override that disapproval at some point as well.
Yeah, I agree. It seems like there's a lot.
Probably the zoning board as well. There's issues.
We had said at when they were last here that we were going to review the changes that they made um to see if it was appealing to the planning board, and then from there, before it went to zoning, I think we discussed possibly sending it for more comments for another GML, although Ken did say he didn't think that they would make uh that much of a change in their comments. But I I did want to point out that Dunkin' Donuts did respond, um, and I don't know if everyone had a chance to look at it, to the village planner, the village engineer, and and building inspector in particulars, memos of last week, and whoops, I gotta let somebody in, and um they have sent revisions to the previously submitted plans as of, I think, Tuesday, and I don't know if everyone had the chance to appropriately review it, so.
No, that would be something I would appropriately review for next month's meeting, because there's a lot of lots to review.
It seems like it's a little overdeveloped, and once you put that in, there's like, no, there's no place. There's no space. I don't know what the other board members think.
Um, I'll leave it to Eve, Lou, Valerie. And I don't know if Duncan wants to review the changes that they've they've discussed so that everyone can go through it.
And we would like to highlight the changes. Hello, board. Steve Sparacco, engineer for the applicant. Um, we're going to have Ken start, but I guess he's not around his desk or disposed at the moment. But um, if you would let me share the 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 plan, Suzanne, I can actually bring us through what changes in particular in. what changes in particular in general we've made since the last time we were before this board.
Okay. You want me to share the screen?
Sure.
Okay. I, I, if you can pull it up, can you pull it up?
I can pull it up. Yeah, you just gotta let me have control here.
I think I did. Do you, can you get it?
Um.
I clicked on.
Cheers. Here we go.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm going to bring up a, here we go. Everybody see that?
Yes.
Okay. So since the last meeting, we have had changes to the circulation onsite primarily. Uh, the site circulation before, uh, went through, um, a revised entrance down here by North the Bond. Uh, toward the middle of the site and went through the site. And, um, there was a, a circle pattern around the building back into that entrance, leaving onto North the Bond. Uh, we also had closed the entrance and we're still maintaining that on the south side of a North Aramont Road connection. And then the north side, we're going to have a, a one and a, a right-hand turn out only. Uh, and that's just consistent with the last plan. Uh, with this plan, we've now changed it so that we can, um, uh, have a better circulation in our estimation and, you know, after consultation and taking the villagers' input uh, around the building and directly onto North the Bond significantly increase in the, um, circulation capability. And just taking the, the drive-through, uh, uh, cars right through the site. And again, this is very important to the applicant, uh, due to COVID restrictions, everyone's into more window service as opposed to getting out of the cars and going in. So that's what this whole application is for. There's existing Dunkin' Donuts there now. It's been there for a long time. We're just trying to add an addition so that we can get a, uh, uh, window service. So we, since that last plan, we've added that circulation in. We've also maintained the existing location of, off North, North the Bond in and out and modified the parking around that area. Uh, we also added a drive-through lane and expanded the parking lot uh, to the east along, um, North Aramont so that we can have not only cars at their gas, at the gas pumps, but also a drive-through, uh, directly for the drive-through service for Dunkin' Donuts. With all the appropriate signage and everything else that needs to be, uh, uh, indicated. Uh, we now have the same amount of parking as proposed before, 12 spaces onsite. Uh, after revising the, um, calculations for the parking based upon the architectural's revised plans. Um, and I'll show them to you right now real quick if I can. Um, let's see. Here we are. Uh, this is the architectials that, uh, we have. There's a total of, uh, existing 1,520 square feet of building square footage existing today. We're adding 777, uh, to the east, I'm sorry, to the west of the building and to the north of the building, 147 square feet for the walk-in freezer and cooler. And I'll go back to my presentation during. So that represents this, these two areas here. Um, but after revising the calculations, we only need 15. Uh, there's a required amount of 15 spaces instead of 16 that we had indicated last time based upon the revised customer service areas provided by the architect. So what we're looking to get today is, uh, uh, progress in the, in the, in the, in the way of getting, uh, a recommendation, a positive recommendation hopefully from the board to go up here before the zoning board appeals. Because there are a number of variances and the primary reason for the variances is because it's a different use. Um, now that you have, uh, a drive-through, it's now considered fast food, which jumps all the requirements up. And it also requires a buffer. Now, where's the buffer required? Off the, to the, uh, to the private properties to the, to the west and to the south, because that's considered. North the Bond is a private drive. Um, so a, a buffer of 75 feet is required off of, um, a private property. Uh, unfortunately, you know, the site is, it is what it is. It's a small site. And, you know, with the required front setback, you can see there's zero buffer provided. And also with the rear setback, there's zero buffer provided. So we're in essence, uh, going to be extensively planting and I'll let Zoe from, uh, New's Design talk about that later. Uh, extensive landscaping along and on the other, uh, adjacent neighbor's property with their permission to put more landscaping in lieu of the buffer. Now, I don't know if, uh, Ken's back yet.
He's on.
Back. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay.
All right. Other than that, Ken, you want to summarize what's transpired?
Uh, yes, um, we were here last time, um, and since then we had a, a number of, uh, reports from the different, uh, agencies and from, uh, engineer and for the planner for, uh, Aramont, which we responded to and that we've gone through, uh, we have like a whole team working on this. We have, you know, engineer, we have architect, landscape architect, traffic consultant, and we try to make this site work. Uh, it is a small site because of the, um, categorization as a fast food and it changes the bulk table. And on top of that, we have two front yards because North the Bond is considered a front yard and then Aramont Road is considered a front yard. So that even imposes additional, uh, restrictions on the site. But the way it's been laid out and the traffic pattern has been, uh, improved like a number of times. The site works. Um, we've eliminated the northernmost entrance and exit on Aramont Road. And we've added another exit at the end of the drive-through on the Bond Avenue. And with this and the parking has been, uh, rearranged. It helps the site work and function well. Uh, as the reports to see, uh, and allows for fire trucks to, uh, go through, we meet, meet those requirements. The main requirement, uh, which Steve has been mentioning is the buffer. So the buffer is required because now with adding a drive-through, it is now considered a uh, fast food restaurant. And that has its own, uh, requirements rather than just a convenience store and a Dunkin' Donuts store and a gas station. So we had to meet that. Uh, there's not enough room onsite. It's physically impossible to have a buffer onsite. So what we've done is, uh, they've had talks, uh, Mrs. Stewart from, uh, has talked with the, uh, company from, um, the maintenance and, uh, company and the, uh, owners of the, uh, Aramont Gardens regarding putting plantings and fencing on their property to, uh, eliminate any negative impacts that might have by putting in the, the drive-through. And they are agreeable with that. We've, uh, they've gotten a letter of intent signed just, actually just today or, uh, very recently that they are willing to do that. Uh, we would maintain as the owner of the Dunkin' Donuts property, uh, would maintain the site, uh, the buffer and the fencing, any cleaning or anything like that that had to be, uh, accomplished. Now, this doesn't have, uh, negative effect on the, uh, Aramont Gardens for a couple of reasons. One is that the gardens, the apartment buildings, they, they don't start for about 100 yards from the edge of the, um, Dunkin' Donuts property, which is quite, quite a distance. And it's sheltered now because of the numerous plantings that we are proposing and fencing. Uh, we've put in on the rear and then also on the side of the Bond Avenue, which we have, uh, when we started out, it was a question whether or not the Bond, North the Bond Avenue is a public or private road. It's been determined that it's a private road. It's never been dedicated. So it's a private road. So we've proposed plantings and fencing that would shelter that from, uh, any impact that it might have from the, uh, drive-through that we're proposing. And when you look at the site, besides the apartments being about 100 yards back, on the north side is the transmission station or substation for O and R. And then, which is, picture's coming up now. Okay. And then on the south side is the Bond Avenue and then the other side of Bond is a office building. So, uh, there really isn't any impact on any residential area, even though it is zoned as this, uh, uh, it's a zone as a residential special housing unit, which is, there's senior citizens and housing, uh, apartments in the Aramont Garden. So that's why it's zoned residential. But there actually isn't any residential buildings that are close to this site. And, uh, they've worked a number of times trying to come up with the best layout and I believe right now they've had, have a layout that really, uh, addresses the problem. And in fact, it's more efficient now with the traffic and the circulation on the site than it was or, or currently is if we put in the drive-through. And the drive-through circulation will avoid people cutting through the gas pumps, um, to, uh, get to the, uh, drive-through because they have an in and out now where it can bypass any, uh, parking and the, and the gas pumps. So, uh, we feel it's, uh, important because as everybody knows, and we've been sitting at home, that's why we're at home for the last year of this COVID-19. And the habits of, uh, retail customers have changed dramatically in that, that time. And the people, uh, want, it's safer to have a drive-through rather than to stop your car, walk into the store, possibly wait on a line, be mixed in with other people and then come back to your car and you drop weight rather than just get on the drive-through, go through. And there's a window there where you'd get your order, place your order and then go through and you get your order and leave the site. And you would go back onto North the Bond and back out to Aramont Road. So this prevents a lot of contact with, uh, people. Unfortunately, it looks, the way it looks now is this situation is going to last for for quite a while and, uh, I don't know what you're going to call normal after this, uh, pandemic, but, uh, I don't think it's going to go back to the way it was. If it does, it'd be a long time before people start, um, shopping and, um, visiting different, uh, sites, retail sites the way they used to. Uh, this is, um, what we're proposing, uh, with this site. Um, it's considered a type-two action. So, uh, we're requesting that we get the planning for the environmental review. Uh, no further reviews required with a type-two action. Um, and with the buffer agreement, we're asking that, um, the planning board or if we have to go to, we have to go to the ZBA to vary that requirement based on all the, uh, remediation that we're putting into the site to substitute for that seven, 75-foot buffer, which in this case, uh, we've sheltered this, um, site from any residential area or, 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 excuse me, or apart, the apartments. So, our, excuse me. Our different, uh, professionals will go over in detail and respond. Respond to the.
Need a drink?
Need water.
Yeah, I do need a drink.
I don't want you to die over this. I need, I got one over here. Hurry up.
See, I, I don't think they can do that by the Zoom. But, uh, we have responded to all the comments that were made. Uh, I sent a letter on, uh, February 23rd, uh, responding to two of the last comments, uh, or comment letters. One is from Eve and the other one is from Lou for the building department. And all the prior letters have been answered. Uh, we've responded to that and that's all been submitted. Uh, for, I don't know how much of it, uh, board has reviewed at this point, but we've responded to all that and we believe we've addressed all the issues that were of concern for the, uh, for the county, the, the town and the, uh, village professionals, what their issues were with this particular site. So if you have any particular questions or we're going to have, like, I guess we'll start with Steve will go through the, uh, what he's prepared and then we have a landscape architect, we have the traffic consultant. Uh, we have, we had a drawing from, uh, an architect. So the inside of the, uh, store is, um, calculated the amount of parking spaces that we needed. So we do need, uh, a variance for that. Uh, we've calculated that, uh, we need 15 spaces based on the code and we have, we're providing 12 parking spaces. And they'll explain, uh, how we've set that up. But with the, uh, drive-through, the people don't need to park. All they have to do is they get online, they go through and they exit the, uh, site. So parking is just limited if you're coming in, you're at the pumps or then you go park if you want to use the convenience store or you want to go to the Dunkin' Donuts inside. But, uh, that, I think we've worked on that and I think they've come up with a good plan. So I'll turn it over. I guess Steve, you want to go now?
Yeah, I kind of, uh, summarized earlier. Ken, thanks. Uh, the only thing I was about to get to before I saw you come on was, uh, loading zone area. We've added on the south end of the building. And we have, of course, you know, the revised parking. I'm actually going to turn it over to Ron Reiman to discuss his dealings with the county and how the traffic impacts are.
Great. Uh, thanks, Steve. Ron Reiman, Mesa Consulting, traffic consulting for the project along with Bill Greeley. Um, I'm in front of you today. Um, I just wanted to say, you know, it's been a big team effort between, you know, all parties. We've taken input from Rockland County, um, the board, you know, the village engineer, village planner. And I just want to thank, uh, Steve and Ken for giving a very good review of the changes we've all worked on with the site. And, um, I'd like the opportunity to, um, just, you know, give a summary of where we started and, you know, where we are right now. And basically I'll start with like a recap of what was discussed at the last, um, meeting. Mesa Consulting, uh, can, you know, we conducted a traffic, a detailed traffic evaluation in October in 2020 um, to address the addition of the drive-through for the existing Dunkin' Donuts. As I mentioned many times, is existing Dunkin' Donuts at the site now. We're looking for, you know, a drive-through. Well, they would like to point out our traffic analysis was a conservative analysis and it analyzed, um, the driveway, site driveways, the signalled intersection at North the Bond, took in consideration queuing and stacking and internal circulation within the site. And as, when I mentioned, we did a conservative analysis and this was confirmed by the villagers' traffic engineers' review that a lot of this traffic is currently onsite going to the Dunkin' Donuts. Just gives them option to now not park, get out of their cars and use it as a drive-through. But as important, the new trips from the roadway system are, are going to be passed by trips. They're already on the system. So they're not going to be necessarily new to, to the, um, you know, the site. So moving, moving along, um, we had discussions early on with the village engineer Eve as well as Rockland County Highway Department and, um, the Rockland County High Department recommended that we close the southern driveway due to close proximity to the signalled intersection. And that we modify the northerly driveway to better delineate as a right turn in and right turn out with appropriate signage to avoid left turns entering and left turns out. And what that does is those movements are the critical movements entering and exiting a site. They'll now come through the signalled intersection with North the Bond.
Excuse me, Ron?
Yes.
I have a question for you. Uh, you mentioned that you don't anticipate any increase in traffic because the traffic is already there, uh, at, at the site. I guess in terms of the, the number of people who are coming and purchasing donuts and coffee and whatever. So my question to you would be, if you don't anticipate an increase in traffic, then, then why would you be doing what you're doing here? Why, why are you adding the? then, then why would you be doing what you're doing here? Why, why are you adding the drive-through if you don't expect to see any benefit from it?
Yes, thank you. I'll, I'll address the quote, the new traffic, I'll explain that a little bit more clearly. I apologize if I wasn't clear on that. Um, remember, the proposed drive-in is primarily for current conditions, COVID, way things are going in the future, a lot of these sites now need the drive-in to, the drive-through to survive. I apologize. Respect to the new trips. The first point I was trying to make was the site currently has the Dunkin' Donuts, so there's existing trips that are going to the Dunkin' Donuts, which now they won't park, and they'll be able to use the drive-through, which will free up parking. We are gonna generate new trips to the site. We're gonna, additional trips to the site, increased traffic at the driveways. But a lot of that traffic is already on the roadway system. They're already on North Airmont Road. So, for example, if you're coming from the north, the North Airmont Road, they would be bypassing the site, they would come in, they're not new to the roadway, they would, like they currently do now, go to Dunkin' Donuts now, get gas, or now use the drive-through. They get their gas, they get their coffee, their donuts, they would come back onto the roadway system. That's what I meant by new trips. They're already on the roadway. So, they're gonna be new to the site, but they're already on the adjacent roads. Hopefully that was a better clarification for you.
I, I think so. So, you're not anticipating then, uh, additional customers and additional increase in sales as a result of this?
We're expecting additional customers, and all our rates were based on industry standards, so we increased the driveways by about fifty cars during the peak hours. My point was, you'll see those cars at the site driveways, and you'll see that within the site. They won't be necessarily new to the roadway system. They won't be new to the intersections, the ramps to the north or intersections to the south. They're already on the roadway. They're just going to be a diverted trip. They're on the road. They're gonna stop for the coffee, come out beyond their road, so the adjacent intersections won't be affected. We will be adding traffic to the site, but they're already on the roadway. They're just making a secondary trip on the way to work or home, et cetera.
I understand, but as long as, we're sort of talking about two separate things then.
And to be-
Because you were talking about the impact on, on the streets, on Airmont Road, on North de Bond. And what I was talking about is the amount of traffic that you're gonna see inside of the site.
Yes, we're, we're adding-
More people who are already there anyway, driving on Airmont Road into the site.
Exactly.
Because you have a drive-through. That's what you're saying.
Exactly. Thank you.
Okay.
Um, on that note, from where we started, we, um, just helped design the drive-through. Uh, Steve's plan shows stacking for ten, eleven cars. Um, industry standards say for a facility like this, you need about eight car stacking, so we more than provide that. So we got, have that covered. Uh, something else that shakes through the process was the, uh, we provided a bypass lane around the site, which Steve showed earlier and Ken mentioned. Um, and that was, uh, recommended, and ultimately, the fire department was recommended by the fire department, and they were, you know, happy with that improvement. And, um, other internal designs were additional striping at the driveway, stop bars, um, additional stop signs, signing, striping along North de Bond. So there were other improvements, as Ken mentioned, that in general, in addition to the closing of the, you know, southerly driveway, that would help improve the existing site, improve the overall site with the Dunkin' Donuts. Um, and your village traffic consultant reviewed our traffic study, the plans, and they came to a conclusion that the, and this goes back to your question, Joe, that the, um, additional traffic that the site was gonna generate, and the analysis demonstrated that the proposed Dunkin' Donuts expansion with a drive-through would not significantly impact the operations on the roadways and intersections in the vicinity of the site. The second point that was in the village traffic consultant's review letter did December twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty, they said that the site access, including the elimination of the southerly access, the, the right turn in, right turn out, the northerly access, and the improvements within the site would improve the traffic circulation. So, back in December, your traffic consultants said all the changes that were made, no significant impacts, and we're making the site better. That keeps us on speed, what our last meeting was. At our last meeting, the board had some concerns, and then it was discussed that the Rockland County, um, oh, let me just step, take a step back. The Rockland County Department of Highways, as I mentioned, we had info from them. They conceptually approved the original plan. So they were happy with that plan, and as I just mentioned, we made some other significant improvements to it. At the last meeting, the board had some questions, and it was noted that the Rockland County, um, Department of Planning had some, you know, comments, which Ken mentioned that we addressed that. A couple of those points, some of the comments were parking and pedestrian access within the site. As you can see from the plan, the parking has been moved closer to the building, you know, Steve could point that out to you. Um, so there's gonna be less conflicts. Steve already mentioned that the drive-through idle aisle has been, um, did see the drive-through aisle, um, coming in from North de Bond? Yes, has been pushed closer to North Airmont Road. So there's less conflicting movements with the, those gas pumps on the eastly side. Uh, Steve did some widening direct drive-through aisle. We have a stop line and a stop sign. And that addressed some of the county comments as well, your, your, your board's comments. Sounds like park, you have kind of comments on the parking. One thing to point out, based on industry standards and studies, that when you put a drive-through in for these, you know, a Dunkin' Donuts or fast food restaurant, the need for parking is reduced. We're not taking any credit for that, and as much as fifty percent of the parking can be, you know, reduced. Um, because, as I mentioned earlier, people aren't parking and discussing with the owner of the property, prop, keep, yes. Oh, someone's, oh, someone's starting to say something to me. Um, right now, people actually-
Let me interrupt you for a second.
Yes.
Uh, Dan Kraushaar, um, the village attorney, Scott Uggell, is on, um, there's a matter, uh, with regard to Con Ed O and R that's on the agenda. And, uh, I have a conflict of interest. Um, I represent O and R. So, I cannot partake in that. Um, so he's graciously offered to take, um, over the rest of this meeting. Uh, so, I'm going to leave, uh, and have him, uh, take over my duties for the rest of the-
For this application or the next? The rest of this?
For the rest of the meeting.
For the rest of the meeting, okay.
Yeah.
All right, Dan, take care.
Take care, Dan. Thank you, guys. All right, have fun. Appreciate it. Bye.
Hey, back to me. I'll, I'll just make one last, you know, point, and then I'll answer any question, any questions. So, hopefully I outlined, you know, Steve mentioned, Ken mentioned, and hopefully outlined some of the new changes that we made. That secondary driveway for exiting only along North de Bond for the drive-through, which will again give better separation between exiting movements from the gas station operation and the Dunkin' Donuts, gives you more storage along North de Bond Avenue. Um, so that was a big plus, and I believe that, you know, some feedback from, uh, the village engineer was happy with that. And the village traffic consultant had an opportunity to review the new plans, and basically, they reiterated that based on the traffic study and their comments on the plans to begin with, that there's gonna be no significant impact. The operation of the site is gonna be better than the operation before, and now with the additional, the driveway for the exiting Dunkin' Donuts drive-through, that, um, that the site will be further improved. So I believe we addressed, you know, the board's last comments at the last meeting, and we addressed the Rockland County planning comments, and again, the Rockland County Department of Highways, which will be needed to permit, permits for, for the changes to the driveways to North Airmont Avenue. Um, they have conceptually approved the plan.
You're referencing that the memo dated February twenty-second?
Yes, thank you.
So, that was bringing into the record, okay.
Ryan, when you say the plan, you mean the traffic circulation?
The, the plan that's up on the, the, um, screen right now, and the plan said that, uh, Steve's office prepared.
Right, but that's more the traffic control, not the plan.
Oh, no, the traffic control, yes.
Just wanna make sure.
Yes.
Now, you said there's no left-hand turns directly onto Airmont Road. Is that, that way today?
Yes, I believe it is, and I don't think people really know that because the signage, um, along North Emperor Road, I, I think there's a sign in the middle, not even at the two driveways, hence the discussions with Rockland County that we're gonna better delineate the northerly access with better signage, so it doesn't happen. But the site currently has people making those illegal left turns.
Yes, they do.
Yes.
Sure do.
And the design of the driveway right now, with the elimination of the southerly driveway, um, the northbound driveway and the signage and the design, you know, they'll help eliminate those illegal left turns. And to be honest, you do want the traffic to come into the site through the controlled signalized intersection.
Anything else? Eve and, um, Valerie, you haven't had a chance to review this?
So I reviewed the, um, initial, the submission for the February for this meeting, and we responded. They subsequently sent, again, digital information a couple of days ago. I haven't had the chance to review all that. I will for the March meeting, but I do have a number of comments that I think is important for the board to hear based upon the February review.
Okay.
All right, so I'll try to keep my comments brief because you received the memo. Um, so a couple of things I just wanted to highlight, that the building inspector actually, uh, provided a zoning review letter uh, dated February seventeenth, so that the zoning table on the site plan should be updated to match the building inspector's zoning review. Um, in terms of architectural review, this application will require architectural review approval. Um, you're also clearly aware that it also requires, uh, ZBA approval. I touched, I'd already touched upon the county board approvals, uh, dealing with the fact that the planning board would need to override, uh, the conditions of the GML. Um, in terms of the zoning variances, I just, you know, wanted to note again that it requires fourteen zoning variances for the implementation of the proposed drive-through. And, uh, I, from a planning perspective, uh, the, you know, I'm raising the concerns that they are excessive, and they do seem, do not seem to meet the intent of the VC zoning parameters for a lot of this size and current configuration of the site. Um, the parking lot, um, while it does allow for internal circulation dimensions, um, they, there are six parking spaces along De Bond that are located within the drainage easement, and the planning board, uh, attorney should also should confirm that this parking is not in conflict with the terms of the easement. Um, also, in terms of the parking requirements, they are asking for a waiver from the board. So if the board is not gonna grant the waiver, this will have to be additional variances, um, that will be, need to be requested. Um, in terms of the landscaping, I think we've, we've already talked about it tonight. I mean, they don't meet the landscaping in terms of the special permit standards as well as the standards associated with, um, within the site plan for, um, parking areas over, uh, five spaces, uh, which but fifteen feet of any residence lot or residence district. Um, in terms of signage, uh, we note that the dimensions of the existing pylon sign were added to the site plan, but they do exceed the maximum total sign area of a hundred and thirty-six feet, so that will need to be updated, or as another zoning variance would have to be obtained from the zoning board of appeals. Um, also, lighting, the lighting plan submitted needs to provide footcandle measurements along the northern property line to make sure that they adhere to this, uh, section dealing with, uh, non-residential lighting, uh, not encroaching onto neighboring properties. And, uh, finally, uh, just wanted to, um, note that the fire department did provide, uh, review letter and is supportive of the proposed site layout, as well as Nelson Pope, the traffic consultant, also provided, uh, comments on the new traffic circulation, and did say that it was, um, more advantageous to have the additional drive-through exit. So that's a more brief summary of my comments that I wanted to just raise with the board tonight.
Okay, thanks, Valerie. Eve, did you have a chance to look at it, or?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I did look at the first submission with the plans that were last revised, January twenty-ninth. I did not look at the second submission that was recently submitted. And, um, again, I don't wanna take a lot of time because I'm pretty much reiterating everything that Valerie had said, but from the start, my concern has been the overdevelopment of this property, uh, due to the small size. There was a lot of congestion and a lot of internal conflicting traffic movements. I think the plan has been improved in terms of circulation and trying to the best of their ability to eliminate the internal, um, conflicts by adding the drive-through around the perimeter, exiting onto De Bond, and by eliminating the second or the southern driveway onto North Airmont, but I think we have to look at in detail the number of variances being requested. And that's sort of a red flag, or should be a red flag to the, the boards. Generally, when you're requesting that many variances, it, it means the site's overdeveloped, so the question goes to, what is the primary use of this site? Is it the primary use still remaining a gas station? Are we focusing on a fast food restaurant? It almost seems to me that we're almost focusing now on the fast food aspect of it as the primary use. But what happened to the gas station use? And you certainly can't have two primary uses on the property. Um, just for consideration, number of variances, there are other design standards, one of them being due to the small size of the property, the inability to provide the buffers on the site. So I can appreciate the yards are reduced. That was approved previously, and the applicant did submit the approved plan, the approved site plan from years ago. Um, but the buffers, they're just not able to, um, address buffers within their property lines. They're not able to address required side yards and within the property lines. Uh, there's just a lot of go, a lot of development going on on a undersized parcel, so that should be taken into consideration, and I think it's important, I believe, um, Blue did go through the plan again, or the, the latest revised plan, and I won't, I don't wanna speak for him. He could certainly speak for himself. But there is a zoning letter stating specifically all the variances that are required. Um, but it's, it's a very large number of variances for a site plan. Um, that's all I have to add.
Thank you. Any comments from the board members?
No comment.
Building inspector.
I don't know, does Lou wanna say something?
I don't know.
Um, really, Eve, Eve and Valerie addressed almost everything. Uh, the only thing that my, my letter addresses is the number of variances. And it does bring up the buffer, and the way the buffer coding is, is supposed to work is that the yards are calculated minus the buffer, which would be a negative number in this case, so um, there's, it's just too many or a lot of variances in this, in this case. I, I haven't, I've gotten a chance to look at the new information or anything that they submitted a few days ago. Um, I'm just swamped at work, so um, hopefully I'll get to that in the next week or two, and we could figure out what, what got changed.
Thank you, Lou.
Thanks, Lou.
I had two things. One was, I was reading in your narrative that you reached an understanding with the adjoining property owner who allowed the applicant to install and maintain- who allowed the applicant to install and maintain planning and fencing as a buffer to the proposed use. I don't know what an understanding is, so I'll let the lawyers figure that one out. The second thing was something from the G M L dated twenty-one December, I think on page two. And it was the second one that said permitting development does not comply with the applicable bulk standards can set an undesirable land use precedent and result in the overutilization of individual sites. And a dovetailing on what you said. A lot in there.
So if I can speak to the understanding with the the neighboring property, I I've spoken to the representative for the owner. His name is Peter Murray. He manages the the property, Armont Gardens property. Sorry, this is Jeff Stewart. I operate the store. Peter and I have been speaking about this project. He is in favor of the project, doesn't want to stand in the way of the project. Doesn't see anything from their perspective that's concerning with respect to the lack of setbacks and and the the way that we are going about the the plantings to help mitigate both the the light impact on their property, the the sound. Everything about this project to them isn't concerning, so he he has committed to me that he will go to the owners and and act as a liaison between us and the owners to get whatever we need to to satisfy the town as far as you know, what whatever kind of agreement the town's going to need to see that will satisfy them, you guys, that that we're working cooperatively with our neighbors and that they're not concerned with this project.
Well, I think it has to do more more than concern. Actually, this is really a legal question. I would assume you need some type of agreement that you have an easement on this property in perpetuity to maintain the plantings, et cetera. And that would also be a liability on any future owners of the gas station lot as well.
Sure. And and so if I can speak to that, we did try to figure out, he's got a a survey that was done in twenty nineteen. I guess they they refinanced the property back then. And he was going to go through, he was going to do that before we did a title search to see what kind of easements are already there. Because since Debonne is a private road, the assumption is that some easements were already granted there on Debonne for the property right there. So we're going to work with him there. If we need to do a title search, we'll do that. And and he didn't seem to think that there was any problem getting an easement from the owners for this project, so.
I can just address that we did a letter of intent, which is that we intend to, you know, have this agreement with those terms in it, but we haven't finalized it yet because we haven't finalized our site plan. We haven't gotten approval for the site plan, so at this point, we wouldn't ask them to for an easement until we finalize our plans. At that point, we can have the kind of agreement that would be agreeable with the village as far as protecting the the Armont Gardens. Sorry, I got that frog.
Frog again.
Neither. And so that 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 memo of understanding the the letter of agreement was simply an effort to provide everybody here with confirmation that we are in the process of working with the owners of of Armont Gardens on this project.
Our actions be a working process process. Maybe a simple solution might help you with the variances if you were able to purchase seventy-five feet of that or something like that.
And as I'm not even concerned about that, and I'm concerned with fourteen to sixteen variances, and I think it's an overuse of the property. That's my concern.
Right, but if they built some more property, then it would be less of the use.
Doesn't matter. You still got fourteen to sixteen to go. Take one out. That's too big. That's my feeling, so unless I get a compelling reason.
Well, I think when you consider variances, you can't just look at the raw numbers. You have to consider the impact it would have on the adjoining community neighborhood. And based on what we've done, I don't see any negative impact, even though the raw numbers are there's a large number of variances and some of them are large.
I hear you can, but my consultants aren't feeling as warm and fuzzy like you are.
We don't have to get too deeply into that.
Tonight.
It's not our board anyway.
Yeah, and and again, I think that Steve Steve had brought this up earlier, you know, a Dunkin exists today. It'll continue to exist, right? The the use change because the classification changes it to a to a fast food versus what it exists today is really the cause of majority of those additional variances.
That's correct.
And and an understanding that, you know, it it's not like we're adding a new restaurant use to the property that's driving those, that the Dunkin already exists, right? And that's not the the intent of that won't change. It's just the addition of the drive-through versus you didn't have anything there before and you brought in, you know, McDonald's use, a Chick-fil-A or something like that. So that that's kind of the 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 intent here, or what's driving those those additional changes is because of that classification.
Well, and Dave, if I can just add to or clarify that a little bit. We without the drive-through, I can't make this point strongly enough. It it if we aren't able to add a drive-through to this, it does affect our ability to continue to operate. I mean, i- in this environment, not having a drive-through is a detriment. It just is. It changes. It changes the the viability of that business. And so it may not exist in the future if we can't have this.
Yeah.
Mike, can I say something? Do I have to say something? Give me. I'm listening to that and I'm saying, are you really telling us that that site is not a profitable site for you? Are you saying that you doesn't make are you saying that you can't make a you can't make a go of it in its current condition? That's hard to believe. Someone could say that to us with a straight face.
It's the Dunkin portion that is of concern. The gas station is going to continue to operate as the gas station does. But the the Dunkin portion, i- i- if if you were to, and we can provide you the numbers. The non-drive-through locations suffered double-digit decline, some to, you know, fifty percent decline versus the prior year as the COVID nineteen experience kind of took hold. Whereas the drive-through locations that we operate saw exactly the opposite impact. We grew.
But that's now. I mean, presumably, this is going to be over within six months or so.
I don't I if I can, I just I I I don't believe that that's true. I think that the patterns, the consumer patterns have changed. I don't think they're going to go back to pre-COVID patterns anytime soon. I just don't.
Yeah, so you said, I think.
I would bet, though, that they would go back to pre-COVID before, if you were fortunate to get before you got it through the hoops, jump through everything. COVID will be will be back to normal.
I mean, we could all hope that, but I just I I as a business person, I can't count on it.
Right. And and so I think we got agreed that, you know, COVID has significantly impacted the restaurant industry as a whole. Restaurants are closing left and right. They're just not reopening. You know, non-drive-through locations are suffering. Smaller restaurants are 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 going to close and going to continue to close, right? We certainly are are feeling that pressure in our non-drive-through locations. We've closed several. We're looking at other ones that we're just trying to get out of the leases because we just can't make of a go of it. And in specifically than like Jeff has mentioned, the non-drive-through locations and and we're looking at that. That's not we're not looking at the short term. It's the long term. We we believe of that, you know, COVID has an impact on the you know, the the restaurant, the folks going to a restaurant. That that is going to continue to some degree in the future, right? Until there's some sort of consumer confidence, right? So, yeah, I think we're going to be edging out of the this this COVID thing as a country. But there's going to be a certain consumer confidence level that it won't return to those levels for quite some time, years possibly. And and that's why you're going to see continue, you're going to see restaurants continue to close.
Yeah, and we are actively pursuing drive-through, whether it's through relocation or adding a drive-through to all of our existing stores that do not have them now.
Right. Right. And 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 again, those locations that we can't, you know, we'll we'll continue to work with the landlords and and a lot of those will will close. We we cannot, you know, move in this type of direction.
Okay, anything else? Open it up to the public.
If anybody wants to say anything, can you?
Let me make a let me make a motion openly.
Yeah, I was going to ask you.
Application for the public to comment on.
Right, I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Dennis. All in favor? Any opposed? None. Okay, you're on Suzanne. Thank you.
Okay, I am looking for any raised hand or anyone typing in the chat, and I don't see anyone. We didn't have anyone last time they appeared either.
Okay.
For the record.
So I'm going to make a motion to continue the public hearing on the twenty-fifth of March at seven thirty P M by Zoom, unless we are allowed to meet, and then it will be in Town Hall.
Okay, it's Suzanne. I just want to point out, we now, I mean, we thought we were going to have six for tonight. We have three. We're up to five for next the next month again.
Well, we get what we can get.
Yep, okay.
Is at eleven. That's the motion.
Seconded it. I could hear.
William.
Oh, Russell, thank you.
All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? All right, we'll see you next month, gentlemen.
Good night, all.
Thank you.
Okay. I I just need to grab a file over there. I'll be right back. I have like no room at my desk. Thank you.
Thank you, Suzanne.
Okay.
Last one on the agenda is the public hearing for R W E Development LLC for a battery energy storage system at three seven five Route fifty-nine. All right, applicant, you're on.
All right, thank you. My name is Hyde Clark. I'm an attorney with Young Summer LLC, and I'm here on behalf of the applicant. I'm also joined this evening by a number of members from both our engineering, Stantec. We have Barbara Wagner and Dwight Herringer. I also have a representative from O N R, Orange and Rockland, Elizabeth Ruiz, both be everyone be speaking tonight. Just to give a brief introduction, this is a proposed battery energy storage system located at three seventy-five Route fifty-nine. This is our first appearance before the planning board. We initially worked with the C P R C, making our first mission in August of last year. And we're before the planning board for site development plan view as well as special permit review. And there's an initial matter hoping that the planning board will consider declaring themselves lead agency tonight by purposes of C C R to keep this moving forward. At this point, I would like to introduce Elizabeth Ruiz from Orange and Rockland, just to discuss the need for this facility from the public utility standpoint. Thank you.
Thank you, Hyde. So good evening, everyone. I believe I missed last month. My name is Elizabeth Ruiz. I'm a project manager for O N R. And I'm executing on fire alternative project in the village of Vermont. Now, during today's meeting, we're going to be presenting the need for this energy storage project, what a role as a utility is in it. Now, New York State, a little bit of background, New York State is looking to deploy three thousand megawatts of energy storage by twenty thirty. This is part of the governor's climate living consumer protection act. And this in turn is part of the effort to give renewable resources in the grid. Now, energy storage in the forms of batteries is proven technology that has been deployed all around the country and around the world, for that matter. And with this seal secret requirements, we're going to be deploying them in many other locations in our service territory. Currently, we have three ongoing projects similar to this one. One that recently came online in this past December in the Pomona area. And that's a three megawatt system. Now, in our service territory, there are certain areas that are experiencing so basically, the electric usage in these areas has continually continually increased development. And O N R has a responsibility to ensure that it can safely and reliably provide service and 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 support that increased load. Basically, you got to make sure that your lights are on at all times. So this is where the battery comes in. Going to be providing that additional electric capacity to support this growth using our existing electric infrastructure. In this case, instead of building a brand-new substation, this project is going to leverage the technology of energies of batteries and it's going to provide that adequate capacity to comply with with the increase and the C C L C goals of three thousand megawatts by twenty thirty. All right, so to address that load growth in the area, about two years ago, we conducted a competitive identify a winner that would fit the needs of this area while at the same time providing the most the most cost beneficial solution to to all of your customers. And after evaluating all the vendors that responded to our request, O N R selected our now battery in a nutshell, use energy in the form of electricity, typically at night when the load is low. It charges this energy back into the grid during times of high demand. This is typically during the sunny, warm days and late afternoon when you come home from work or from school. And people are cranking their ACs and all the electronics are on in your house. Now, as a utility, we're going to be the ones identifying the needs real time as we currently do. And we're going to direct the R W E to dispatch or discharge the battery. But the actual operations in maintenance of the system will be completely in the hands of R W E. Now, with this little introduction, I'll hand it off to R W E for more project specific.
Go ahead, Barbara. Thank you.
Questions?
Okay, I will do that. I'm Barbara Wagner with Stantec Consulting, the design engineer for the project. Thank you to O N R for laying out the needs for the project. I want to briefly introduce the site design and speak to some of the related code conditions. So the property is located at three seventy-five Route fifty-nine. It's zoned for neighborhood shopping for purposes of a battery energy storage facility. It's located near O N R's utility circuits. It has really good access off of Route fifty-nine. It's got a relatively open level space for the equipment, and the use is going to be compatible with the zoning, which the village has determined is a utility use requiring a special use permit. It's currently developed with two buildings. It's the former Armont Pub and a two-story building that's currently a residential rental. Both buildings will be demolished, which allows a more compact equipment layout and greater setbacks to the neighboring properties. The actual facility will consist of eleven battery storage containers and the associated electrical switchgear and transformers placed on concrete pads and surrounded by a gravel pad. The equipment will be enclosed within a security fence. That'll be chain link on the north and the east. But it'll be board on board where it faces residential properties. But it'll be board on board where it faces residential properties to the west and south. The containers themselves are about eight feet in height, and they will be well screened by the eight-foot fence. They will further be screened from residential properties with plantings with the choice of species acceptable to the village. One advantage of this compact site plan is that we were able to provide a substantial setback to the residential neighbors to the south. It's 75 feet to the fence and 87 feet to the nearest structure. We understand that the code calls for an additional 23-foot setback for which we will request an area variance. And that request will be based on the low intensity of this use from a traffic noise and visual standpoint, plus the need based on code requirements for the equipment spacing. The only other variances to be requested will be for development coverage. Utility use only allows a 5% development coverage. Existing is a 31%, and the proposed will be 55%. But it's worth noting that although the total percentage increases from 31 to 55, that 55% includes substantial areas where the existing impermeable asphalt is going to be replaced with more permeable stone. And some of the existing asphalt is going to be completely restored to lawn. Some of the existing trees will need to be removed, including some for which permitting will be required through this board. Since our initial design and in consultation with the C D R C, we've worked with the landscaping layout to reduce those removals from 32 to 26 trees. Based on village comments, we're refining the total number of trees for which the removal permits will be required. So I mentioned stormwater. We will be disturbing less than an acre, and therefore, a stormwater pollution prevention plan is not required. Our design approach was to work with the existing grades as much as possible and keep the site functioning with the existing drainage patterns. But we are adding some permanent stone check dams to further slow peak discharge without creating areas of standing water. The project is designed to provide emergency access and equipment compliance with the New York State's code requirements for battery energy storage systems. Those details are going to be covered by other presenters. For now, I just wanted to note that the design includes a new onsite fire hydrant and a dry stand pipe fire protection system that's designed to provide the capability if the need should ever arise for the fire department to deluge individual best units without needing to enter the fenced-in areas. So that that design was developed based on input from Tallman and Fire Department and in close consultation with the technical experts on our RWE's design team. We're continuing to work out the design details on that system in coordination with the village, the county, and the Tallman Fire Department as the overall site design has progressed through the approval process. So I'm going to wrap up the summary. You've already heard O N R's description for the need for this facility. I do want to say from the neighborhood compatibility point of view, compared to typical businesses or other commercial operations, this facility is going to be a very low-key neighbor. The lighting will be minimal. The equipment will meet the village noise code and performance standards. No onsite staff are needed for day-to-day operations. The regular scheduled maintenance only occurs during the day. Small crew, typically, it's just a couple times a year. There'll be almost no traffic, no litter, no garbage truck pickups, no nighttime business activities, no lit signs, no amplified music. And the project aim is to provide a public benefit to the village by improving the electric utility infrastructure to better serve local residents and businesses. So with that, I will turn it back to Christina.
Actually, I'll leave it back over to Hyde.
Okay.
So that's the overview of the project, and at this point, we can either open up to initial questions from the board or I don't know if Barbara has the ability to share her screen so we can see the site plan.
I have a question.
Yep. Go ahead.
I just, I'm really, I have to ask why the, why Orange Rockland can't find a site that's more, in a more industrial or area. I mean, I appreciate the need. Of course, we all appreciate the need of storage, and you've explained it well. I respect the necessity. I'm just really quite stunned that we would put a facility like this so close to a residence when there was plenty of other opportunity to find sites that are in industrial sites that are far from residence. This battery facility, to me, is an extremely dangerous potential. Don't tell me there's, there's, it'll be a quiet neighbor, there's no traffic, there's no noise. Yeah, it's a silent problem. You, you won't hear about it until it's an emergency. If there was a fire or a gas, things happen. Electrical systems malfunction, it's not anyone's fault. I respect Orange Rockland, but to put this facility there with that type of use, I think that's just, to me, it's, it's, it's hard to, it's really hard to justify. I'm sorry.
So I think the first response to one of the comments, just in terms of safety, there is New York State Building Fire Code regulations that dictate.
Right. So tell that to neighbors when there's, when there's smoke and toxic fumes, and God forbid, what else coming from that site. Tell people how wonderful you've thought about it, because you can't resolve that problem. It's not your fault. You have to enclose it in some facility that wouldn't allow for smoke to billow out of the building. You just can't, I'm sorry, I don't, I, as the village attorney, I think this is a terrible idea, terrible idea.
Well, I'll, I'll let Orange Rockland just speak to the need as to, in terms of the location of the facility. Elizabeth, if you could go ahead.
Yeah, yep, definitely. So can you hear me okay with these headphones?
Yes.
Yes.
So we did look at about 41 sites before we landed on this site. And this site specifically is going to allow us to synergize two battery systems for two different circuits in one location. It's also, it's also going to allow us to connect to those two circuits with minimal infrastructure changes. So in general, it's just more cost beneficial to the customers to select this one location. Now, in terms of the safety concerns that you have, they have your rights, we have our contractors here that have studied the system and that can speak to the safety of it. So I'll, I'll let either Paul or George touch on that, since they're the experts.
So it's impossible to cite this close to a, or right next to a substation?
Good evening.
I'm sorry, Dennis, yeah, Paul, just one second. Dennis, you had a question, just in terms of location near a substation, I missed the.
Right, right. I would think that a more suitable location would be right next to a substation.
Actually, the best suitable location is really where we're serving the customers. So if we were to put it at the substation, the circuit would still be overloaded. So we really need to serve, so we're really trying to cite it wherever the loaded circuits are, so where the customers are. This is the reason why it doesn't go in a substation, but it was considered, the substation where it's coming out, where the circuits are coming out of was considered. But
It sounds to me, with all due respect, it sounds to me with all due respect that you're more concerned about efficiency, saving maybe some efficient process or making the process more efficient to O N R, and I respect that. I care about people, people's lives, people's health and safety. And I'm, I can't possibly think that we would give a who about saving a couple of dollars on Orange Rockland expense when you're putting people's lives at stake. I, I just, this just does not make any sense to me. None.
No, no, and, and I completely, I mean, I respect, I respect your concerns, but I have to say the way we operate as a utility is safety always at the forefront. And we wouldn't be citing a battery storage system in a location that may be causing safety concerns to the public if we knew there were safety concerns to the publics. There are none.
Well, that's, but that's, but that's what, but that's what utilities always say. Look at the incident in Japan when they had that, that earthquake and they had that tsunami or whatever. Of course, you do, you plan ahead. Of course, I know that you do your best. You, but there's some things you cannot prevent. And there's nothing you could say, in my opinion, that's going to ever tell me that you can protect people 75 or 80 feet away. Families and children, if God forbid, there's a fire or something happens, or a lightning strike, I mean, come on. You gotta be kidding me.
I mean, with all due, with all due respect, this is a permitted use in this district. This is regulated.
Especially used. If we determine that it's, it's, that it meets the safety, so I, I, I know that it's permitted, doesn't mean you have the right automatically to have it. Don't say that to me.
Let's get back even to the dollars and cents on this. Why do we, why is O N R wanting to put this through a middleman who has to make money on this as well, rather than owning it yourselves?
So if I may touch on that, Dennis, thank you for the question. This is M D Sakib. I'm from Orange Rockland as well. So when you look at these technologies, there are specialties that needs to happen, and there's sourcing that needs to deploy these additional technologies in an area in a safe and secure manner. R W E has done these jobs before, and we are trusting and we rely on them to perform their due diligence and cite these projects properly in the area. So as you know, as Elizabeth has mentioned, safety is of the top priority. And we want to make sure that we install, maintain, and operate this battery safely. And that's where R W E comes in. And I understand, Scott, your concerns with safety. And we have, you know, we're going to present to you, Paul Rogers, who's a retired fire retired lieutenant from F D Y, but he presents a viewpoint that is factual, Scott, and I understand your concern. But again, hopefully, that will help to kind of mitigate some of your concerns. But I understand your concerns, Scott. And again, it's not any other different technology than what you have on your cell phone in your pocket. So again, we have a couple, we have a couple of experts here that, you know, I want to kind of have, give them the chance to present their side. And then maybe see that mitigates some of your concerns, Scott.
It's the same technology that's in my cellphone? My cell, my cellphone can't all right, I can't, I won't even debate that with you. You gotta be kidding me. All right, no problem.
Even if it was technology, wasn't there a problem with some cellphone libraries where people got burned?
Come on, that's
I have a question about, are there other sites in Rockland or in this area that has similar setups?
Had mentioned, we chose this site because it's optimally located. It's near two of our circuits that
That's not what I asked. I said, are there other running, currently running systems anywhere else in this area?
Yes, there is. We have a battery that's online at Pomona. Where that, that, in our Pomona area that's, you know, connecting to one of our distribution circuits. Similar process as what we're proposing today.
Is that near a residential site?
We have, we have homes that's in close proximity to the area.
What does that mean? How close?
We can go back and get you that information. I just don't, it's close by, it's not too far out.
What's the address?
23 Dilts Road.
What, what road?
What road?
Dilts, D I L T Z.
Dilts Road.
Dilts Road, thank you.
I, I happen to be the building inspector for the village of Pomona.
Oh.
Are you familiar with that site?
Yes, I am. It's not anywhere near a highly trafficked area. It's on a little two-lane road off of Leyden Town Road.
Yeah, what a surprise.
It is in the unincorporated village of Ramo, town of Ramapo.
Well, another surprise.
If we can, we have Paul Rogers here, and I'd just like to give him an opportunity to speak toward.
We say goodnight.
Hey, good evening. Can you hear me okay? Yeah, so as he mentioned, my name is Paul Rogers, and I am retired from the New York City Fire Department, where I worked on these energy storage systems for five years during my final time with the New York City Fire Department. Your concerns were my concerns too when we first looked at these in New York City. There were no standards or codes actually for these things at all. Currently, there is a standard out there that I sit on NFPA 855, which looks at installation, safe installation of energy storage systems. In New York City, they put their own code out. And currently, they are allowing systems to be built in the rural area of New York City and also on rooftop to high-rise buildings. There are many safety features that go into this particular energy storage system product standards. UL has a couple of product standards where they actually will burn the system completely to see what happens in the event that these things do go on fire. And whether the protection systems would be able to maintain or mitigate the actual fire itself. And that is called UL 9540A. If you're interested, that's called large-scale large-scale fire testing that is required within the code itself. Also, there is a lot of layers of safety to prevent these things from going on. And number one thing that they have is they think called the B M S, a battery management system. Even your phone has a battery management system. If you would lay it out in the sun in the, in the middle of the wind, in the middle of the summer, it will actually shut down. That is, that's basically the brains of it saying, hey, this thing is getting too hot, we need to shut this thing down. The same applies in this, in this situation here in the, in the installation. So those layers of safeties need to be compromised in order for this thing to have some sort of failure. Now, for me to say would never have a fail would be irresponsible. I can never say that. But I can tell you that there are a lot of layers of safety that need to be compromised prior to anything going wrong. Also, R W E has constant monitoring of this system 24 hours a day, so they can actually watch how the battery, the state of health of the batteries is, is performing all hours of the day. And in the event that something comes, something went, added a parameters, the safety parameters, it will automatically shut the battery down, so it doesn't continue to have any types of problems. Also, in regards to the, the way that it's going to be installed, it's going to be above the state code. And it actually has fire protection systems that above the, what the state code actually asked for. So I'm open for questions if you're interested to about this particular installation.
I have a quick question for you, sir. Based on, I guess what we heard earlier, I don't know the gentleman's name, it just says Con Ed and O N R. My understanding is O N R essentially is hiring R W E because they hold the expertise and the knowledge to run this facility, and that's why they're outsourcing it to R W E. Where, so in, in in case there is a situation with this facility, I think I read somewhere in the, in the materials provided. If R W E has to come down or go to the site, how, it's like two and a half hours or something that they have, like where is this person and how far away are they?
Yeah, that, that is a requirement that the, that the fire department asked for, very similar to what's going on in New York City. In the event that there was an incident that would take place, they've wanted someone to show up to the scene to help with the fire department and give information to the incident commander at the scene. New York City Fire Department also requires the exact same thing where someone knowledgeable with the system needs to come and assist the fire department as far as plans are concerned and mitigating any type of event that may take place. Usually, I tell the fire department, if it's on fire, it's pretty easy. We're just going to hook into the fire department connection and flood the thing and put it out. It's when it's not on fire when we have a concern. And that's where the fire department would need some guidance in that particular area.
So, so in so again, O N R is hiring the experts, which is R W E, so I'm assuming we don't have local expert knowledge near to us. We would need a representative from R W E to help provide that guidance. So i- in the situation that there's an incident and obviously an emergency, time is of the essence. How far away is the individual from R W E? What's their response time?
So R W E has committed to the fire department that they would have someone there within a two to two and a half hour timeframe. To have someone readily available right away, that, that's very difficult. And even within the New York City Fire Department, which is the strictest code probably in the country right now, they realize that that's difficult. So they mandated a two to two and a half hour response time for someone to get to the scene itself.
So in your, in your experience, then, I mean, is that a reasonable period of time when you have an emergency incident unfolding? So in your, in your experience then, I mean, i- is that a reasonable period of time when you have an emergency incident unfolding? It seems like a long period of time to wait for somebody with expertise to come and provide guidance.
Yeah, so in, in New York City and also with this particular installation, there would be a number for them to call at the. R W E will have a notification operation center. Well, they'll be able to get some guidance. And they'll be able to get information about the B M S. So if the B M S or the battery management system is saying that there is a problem. If the fire department would show up and they don't see anything and they call into this number and the B M S were to say there's a problem. Then they'd say they're sending someone to the scene to help them look at this and, and go over a couple of things before they did any type of action to it itself. So yeah, that, that, there is some technical stuff that the fire department would need to understand. And they'll be training coming up to the fire department in regards to this site specific installation.
So is that spe- specialized training specific to this type of a system that the fire department would receive?
Yes, that would be, you know, going over the emergency response plan, answering questions, making sure they fully understand. What they would do when they showed up to the scene.
Two and, two hours, two and a half hours seems like a long time to me.
It sounds obscene. That's assuming. Not this long, obscene, two hours in an emergency is obscene.
Well, that's also assuming that driving conditions are fine. It's not raining, it's not snow or anything else going on at the time.
This is you, come on, this is.
I have a comment to make. These are battery systems. It's not like a transformer fire. These are battery systems with highly. Caustic chemicals.
Toxic, toxic fumes.
That if something happens, two and a half hours, as Scott said, is ridiculous. But how can you possibly have one person responsible for troubleshooting it? And how can you possibly train the fire department to handle this kind of explosion, let's say there is? It's just way too much to put in a residential area.
That level of risk is, is, is unacceptable. Come on.
Things being the wave of the future or would they be much smaller units like in the home? Isn't Tesla coming up with a home battery storage system?
Not at this battery level. This is a hard.
Yes, no, there, there are different, different levels of size of batteries. There's certainly batteries that are inside homes, batteries that are inside buildings in New York City. And as I stated, there are regulations, New York State Fire and Building Code regulations that have to be met. And we are working with the Tom and Fire Department very closely on making sure that they are comfortable. With responding to any potential event. We have provided a default, a draft emergency operations plan. That will also be on file with the fire department. And there are a number of documents that outline the, the operation of this facility. So happy to answer any other questions on that or any questions as to. The site plan and the layout of the application that, that we've provided tonight.
Can I, can I show your, I would like to show the planning board a Google shot of an installation in New York City. Just to give you an idea on where one was located in New York City. If I could share my screen, I'll be able to show that if they're interested.
Well, can you also give a more detailed response on what happens within the container? If there is an incident in terms of the, not, not just what a response would be from a fire department or a human. But the, what's, what's actually working inside to, to prevent an incident as well? How, how the facility will, will shut down?
Well, a- a- as I mentioned before, there is a B M S that is the I's and E's and the brains of the actual system that controls everything. If there is anything that, that goes. Out of the parameters, the normal operating parameters, that B M S kicks in immediately will shut down and isolate all. Energy in the actual system itself. So will not continue to charge or discharge.
If you can just describe how it's laid out inside the container. Just, you know, the board may not understand in terms of what the actual, how the batteries are laid out in that container.
So we, so each, each container itself has its own dedicated fire department connection, dry pipe. That actually fire department would hook into, in the event that there was a fire, fire department would hook into. And they would use their pumper and pump the water directly and they're flooding it. This is similar to what we have in New York City. In order to flood these things, if they were to go on fire, we're not saving them there. They're gonna be ruined anyway as a result of the heat that may be generated from a, a fire that was inside of that. So that is, that's something that a lot of people are starting to look at this dry pipe. Where the fire department would just come in and actually flood these things.
So I, you know, I'm not really, I'm completely unfamiliar, I guess is fair enough to say with a system such as this. But I know enough to know that water and electricity don't mix. So how does that work?
Yeah, I had the same concerns myself about that. Water, electricity, you're right, generally you don't, it doesn't mix. But in this situation, now we have electrochemical. And there's been many studies done that water is the most effective way to actually try to suppress a lithium ion battery fire. So like you, I was a little skeptical of that myself. And you heard people saying that lithium, which is what they call an I U N metal like magnesium, titanium is reactive to water. That was not the case in this situation. This is a lithium salt. And actually water would be the best suppressant agent that you have for lithium ion batteries. I don't know if everyone can see my screen.
We got it.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, so this is right here, six. Eight, I'm sorry, eight battery storage here, four on each side, and then they got a control trailer right here. This is private dwellings in this particular area. This is a school, a middle school right here. This is a public assembly church in this area. This is a bowling alley in this here. These are the ones that were put into New York City with the approval of the New York City Fire Department. They have a fire department connection in this area here and a fire department connection in this area here. Fire, there is a fire hydrant down here where the fire department would hook into. And they would supply the engine and they would supply the fire department connection here. Flooding the system associated with the actual container in, in that, in this particular area here. I, I'm only telling you this because this is, these are some of the things that we're seeing in New York that have gotten approval. We spent many, many years looking at these things. And these systems that are, are installed currently do not have the safety features because they've been upgraded. As we learn more and more, do not have the safety features that R W E will be putting into the systems that. They're looking to install in the Amon area.
That's, that is what we're looking at here, Paul. Compared to what we're, what's before us today, what's, what's being proposed. Is, is this that we're looking at in Queens, a smaller facility? How does it compare?
Looks like it's about the same. It's about nine units and we're talking eleven.
Yeah, this is a. Twelve, I believe it's a twelve megawatt system. The one in Amon. I can't remember what was the number in Amon, how much was, was we, what we put in?
It's about the same.
It's ten, around ten.
I'd say ten, but I wasn't sure of exactly. So it is, it is similar.
In, just while we're also talking about design and setup, we also have Raul on as well. That can, engineering team with developer can speak to some of the specifics on how the containers are set up.
Thank you. Yeah, like I, it's, it's. Can e- everyone hear me okay? Just wanted to make sure. Yeah, so like, like Paul said, just to add to that, I can, I can add more details as to, you know, sort of the level of protection features we've added on. In the, in the design that is being considered for the Amon bus, the best system, sorry. So we have, you know, multiple levels of protection. Before we actually get to an emergency situation where we would declare it to be. You know, like a, like a fire event. So there are multiple levels of electrical protection. So I'm not gonna get into the details of that. So there are many things for the B M S, many indications we can get from, from the batteries themselves. That are clear indications through, through studies that is widely published. That we monitor very closely to be able to electrically isolate the system. That's one of the first things we would do. And the next steps around the, the, the potential gases or anything like that, that is. You know, more widely said to be common in situations like this. We, we also have special sensors that's put in each one of these containers against each one of the. Battery racks that go in the containers and set at different limits. There are multiple alarm limits and also alert limits. And to then activate additional safety features that would include sort of like. You know, venting the gases off and so on and so forth. And the very last step is this, that we, we would do is around, you know, dousing it with, with water. That is when there is clear evidence that there is a, a fire that is initiated. And usually with the batteries, just because of, you know, all the electrochemicals and the, and the, and the components that's in there. They don't, they don't catch fire immediately. It takes them a while for it to get to like a. You know, like to, to say like the, the, the evidence of fire would be like smoke from somewhere to get to that level. It takes it a while to get to that stage. And to also remediate that situation, the, the batteries we use are. Are tested to U L ninety-five forty-eight. It's a well-known. Testing procedure that requires the batteries to be able to maintain. It's, it's called thermal runaway within certain components of the, of the system. So they check it at the smallest level, which is the cell. So a, a, a module, which is kind of like a box, has multiple cells in them. And these, these tests look at whether the, the batteries from a particular supplier is able to maintain. You know, like the thermal runaway, which should initiate, which later lead to a fire if not controlled within these different. Components, so cell, module, and eventually a rack. And then between the racks. And so the batteries we are using are also tested against that. And have proven to be able to maintain it within the module. So that's just like, like a little bit more further detail into the amount of. Protective features we have put into the system. I'll just pause there and, you know, if you have any further questions, I'm available to answer to. Thank you.
Some members of the board had some training on, from the state, on their goals for batteries. And I, I agree that they want to increase the capacity by using the batteries. But their goal was to do it through clean energy, through wind, solar, water, et cetera. This doesn't seem to meet that criteria.
Well, there is, I was just looking it up, that New York State has a goal of three thousand megawatts of energy storage by twenty thirty. So I think systems like this will probably be more common than, and we'll all be getting more and more used to them in, in different areas.
Right, it just needs to be charged through conventional generation.
Plus, they'll be more and more common, but will they be more and more common abutting residential neighborhoods? I sure hope not.
Well, I wanted to.
Think if it's solar or wind or something, it would be out in a field someplace, not near residence.
Well, so that, I mean, that's when you have combined battery storage with renewable energy projects. But there are, like as this one is a standalone where you're actually charging it from the grid. But you still don't have emissions, you know, like a typical peaker plant where you have a coal plant. That tries to take on that need. So Orange and Rockland's identified that they have. A need that this can help in terms of. Being, you know, distributing the energy and electricity at times of peak demand as opposed to turning on the traditional. You know, polluter like you mentioned in terms of a, a peaker plant. But Elizabeth can also speak to that. I think she's got her mute button off.
Those pollution generating plants will have to work harder at night to charge up the batteries and so on. So instead of coming out during the day, the pollution will be at night.
Not, not necessarily because the load at night is lower.
You're cutting in and out. I can't really hear you.
I'm trying to mute everybody so we don't get the feedback.
Only when she is speaking, so.
Go ahead, Elizabeth.
Alrighty, so I was, I just wanted to, I was gonna talk about on, on, on the point that I just mentioned. So having storage coupled with solar and wind does allow you to bring more renewables into the grid. However, in, in some cases, like in the case that we're doing right now, it's really to prevent picker plants from running in the middle of the day. Picker plants are the most carbon. Field plants. So it will prevent, it will prevent, it will help the decarbonization goals that the state has, has set. Which is why the, the, the general or the generic three thousand megawatts of storage, it doesn't matter where you put it. Some of it is gonna go on transmission land, some of it is gonna go on distribution land. And it all depends on, on what's really safer for the system, cheaper for the customers and safe for everyone. So you are gonna see a lot of this in our service territory. Like I said, we're working currently on three projects. There's another one that's coming up at, at the end of this year. So they, they will become more normal. And, and, and someone mentioned, someone mentioned home batteries. That's, that's another project that it's on our, it's on our queue as well.
The building inspector had a question.
Yeah, I was just gonna say that. Thank you, Dennis.
And his question was who's legally responsible if there is an accident? Is it O N R or R W E?
Who's irresponsible if there is an incident?
Who's legally.
Legally responsible.
R W E. So R W E owns the asset. And to your point, Scott, you mentioned this earlier, remandated by the P S C. To have third-party ownership. So it's, it's really not a decision here.
How many of these facilities exist today in, in this area? I mean, I, I guess now we know of two, right? One down in Queens and one in Pomona. But in, in looking at, I guess, our local area, maybe the New York metro area, how many exist?
Let me ask, so in our service territory, I know we have one online, three are coming online next year. In our, in this, in the, in the current service territory, Paul, do you know that number or M D?
Yeah, so, so Joe, in Connect territory, in Connect, they have a few that's online. They have a, you know, they have, they have a system that Paul just showed that's located in Queens. They also just recently got a contract for a hundred megawatt battery. That they're located in Astoria as well. And so there, so a lot of these projects are happening at a much bigger size limit. Not just a smaller size limit, what we have at like ten or twelve megawatt. There's hundred megawatt units that's being put in Astoria in location. That's, you know, that's about that far. That's, you know, that's again, it's in metropolitan area. Also, Joe, to your point, there's multiple units that are located in the Albany and also the central Hudson area. So if you look at it in around Albany area, there's two twenty megawatt units that's, that's being commissioned, that's up and running, that's working without any issues. And they've been online over the last couple of years.
I know of two big units, one in East Hampton, Long Island, and another one in Montauk, Long Island. Dedicated buildings that are actually indoors.
Well, how many do you have in New York City?
Exact number, I don't know, but I know of a couple, now that I'm departed from the fire department. When I left there, there were eight that were approved. At that time, there were ones that were built that were not, they were built inside buildings, but they were not lithium ion chemistry. They were valve regulated lead acid and they were in garages, about 15 of them. But I wouldn't include them in on what we're talking about today, even though they do the exact same thing. It was just a different chemistry.
Thank you.
Mr. Rogers, maybe if I could just ask you a slightly unfair question. If you took your consultant hat off for a second, considering these systems, what keeps you, what would keep you awake at night worrying about what could go wrong?
To be honest with you, I looked deeply into the actual systems themselves to see how they, how they actually, if they were to fail, what, what do they have in place? Prior to, before it goes up in, in flames. And I'm familiar with a couple of systems that are built well, and I'm familiar with a couple of systems that I have concerns about. And it gets deep into the system itself. So if this thing were to go, were to have a failure, me as a firefighter, I'd rather see it on fire than actually not on fire if there is a failure.
Well, follow up on that. What would you like to see if you were living next door to it?
I, I can tell you, if I did not have trees around my house, I'd be getting one on my house. And eventually I probably will get an energy storage on the back of my house.
Right. But that would be a much, much smaller unit and it would be solar.
It would. It would be hooked into a solar on route to you.
That's a different item. What I'm talking about if you live next to this plant.
Well, the, like, for instance, I'll use Tesla. Everyone knows Tesla. Tesla technology for their house battery, which is called a power wall, uses the exact same technology for their mega pack, which is a much bigger system, exact same. So what can go wrong in the back of your house can also go wrong in, in a, in a large, in a large system itself.
Right. But the scale would be a lot different.
Sure. The scale would be different, of course. Yes. Yes.
So now we're talking about your house being next to this facility that you're proposing.
Yeah, I, I, I didn't give it a thought. It, it's a great question. I would, I would probably ask the, a couple of questions like they're asking. I would make sure that the fire department is aware of it. And as long as I know the fire department can handle it, I guess if you have an open lot next to my house and you had to choose something, I probably wouldn't mind choosing this over something else that could go there. It's a quiet neighbor as far as I'm concerned.
You'd probably prefer another house.
Well, if a house could be built there, probably, yeah.
Now Suzanne, is this really a public hearing as it's stated on the agenda?
Yes, it is. They sent out mailings. It is a public hearing. I, I, I just wanted to point something out. I'm, we don't have to go through it all if others you want to at this point. But in the G M L, it said a review must be completed by the Rockland County Office of Fire and Emergency Services. We're historically known to see either the fire department, fire inspector, or the office of fire and emergency. This is saying must, and I did send them everything after we, we got this G M L, but we have not received those comments. So I just wanted to point out, so we'll be receiving something. And as you know, the Department of Health right now is not doing reviews due to the COVID. That's their priority. So I just wanted to point that out. And we did get all the other comments, other than town of Ramapo hasn't commented. But that historically, they don't usually comment anyway. But I just wanted to let you know that. But it is a public hearing to answer your question.
I do have a question for Mr. Rogers. Is there an emergency suppression system of any kind? You're waiting for two and a half hours for an expert to come there. And the fire department would be hosing it down. But is there any sort of emergency suppression system built into this? To the facility before anybody gets there to shut this down? God forbid, there's a major accident.
Yeah, there, there, there is. And that's a great question. There's a, a clean agent that, or a, I believe they use in statics. Don't quote me on that, but there is some sort of suppression system that could be used prior to the fire department showing, showing up. The, the introduction of water would be an absolute last resort in the event that the other suppression system fail to properly handle any particular fire that could take place.
You referenced the units in the city. Are you familiar with what R W E is proposing? Thoroughly familiar with it?
I am. I am familiar with it. Yes. Yes.
The ones in the city also owned and operated by R W E?
Uh, no. No. We, when we looked at it, we asked them to make a couple of modifications, which we did immediately. When we, we, we were looking at it from the fire department point of view and safety of the firefighters. And they, they actually did that after we made that recommendation, which was great.
You're talking about this one of the ones in the city?
This particular site here. It, it, they just wasn't, they just weren't thinking about it, but they wound up taking the, they extended the fire department connections a little further out to the fire department. So they would keep them a good distance away from the actual energy storage system if they needed to hook into the fire department connections.
Barb, perhaps you could share your screen again to show those 22 lines. There's 22 separate lines that go right outside the fence. And, and it is planned to have a new hydrant that would be installed. So the fire department would really only have like 30 feet from, from a new hydrant. Perhaps you could point to the, the fire department connections, Barb. Alright, so there's a new hydrant that would be right in front of the lot. And then they can, if based on, right there. And then based on notification by phone, if there was a, a need to do something right away, they would connect to any one of these distinct dry connections.
So the, the fire department would, would be able to determine standing outside the fence, exactly which, which connection goes to which, which one of these units. And they could be directed to flood them if and when that was indicated precisely to, to the unit that needed it.
Yeah, we haven't, I haven't really talked too much in detail about the site plan at all. Is there any, are there any questions about it as long as we're here?
What does it feed into? Where's the electricity go? Is it underground? You going to build any other infrastructure?
So the, there, there are two sets of utility lines that come into the site because there's two circuits that they connect to. So that's on the one side. Those are the poles here. On the other side for the other circuit, those are the poles here. And then the various connections are, are shown there. I know it's hard to see on the screen, but they're labeled E. Those are the electric lines that connect the whole network together.
These are existing poles?
No, they'd be new poles.
But is it connecting to the poles that run along 59 already?
Right. Then, then they would tap into exactly, exactly into the village's system so that the energy can be transferred in and out as it's, as it's needed.
Just curious, are, are there going to be any changes along those lines going to the east and to the west? Or, or is it just connecting in and that's all you need to do?
I believe there's some modifications to a few of the lines sort of downstream. But it's, it's not something that's going to be really visually noticeable. It's just a matter of, of making connections that are, that will make that transfer efficient.
So maybe additional cable or thicker cable along the lines?
As far as I know, the, the existing cable is going to all stay the same. The only, the only difference is we're adding these new poles in to tap into the existing lines.
See. Okay.
And the new poles will be of the same size as the existing ones? Look the same?
Yeah. Yeah. They're traditional utility poles.
They had to be poles or can you bury it to the lines you're going to?
I defer to the electrical engineer on that. It's.
Actually, it was an overhead pole per the request with Orange and Rockland, the inter, the transmission and interconnection teams. They were going to be overhead.
Well, can they bury it? Is that a possibility?
We can look into that.
I like that answer. I have another question. Can you expand this site? Can you add more capacity, more batteries, bigger batteries, whatever?
With the current configuration that we have on there, it looks like we may be able to fit a little bit more, but not much. I mean, given some of the current design constraints, it's pretty maxed out how it is right now.
But if the battery technology changed, you could, you put bigger batteries in, I assume.
So when you say bigger, and I'll defer to Rahul, our head of our engineering team. The, the batteries themselves fit inside the container. So would you be wanting to know if our containers would increase in size in order to fit more denser units?
No, batteries can get smaller. So they get smaller, you get more power and might then, you know, you make them the same size, you get more current, more electricity.
Right.
Yeah, more capacity.
There you go.
That's what we've seen, that they've been, they've been able to shrink with the footprint, but be stronger in capacity. So correct.
Hey, I, I'd like to just correct something for the record. I think I've mentioned that there was a, a clean agent. These do not have clean agents inside of them. They will have that sprinkler system that is hooked into the fire, fire department connection for extinguishment. And I think I mentioned that earlier, so I apologize on that one. I, I, I think I also didn't mention that they'll have smoke detectors and gas detectors on the inside for monitoring too. That would send an alarm directly to the fire department for any type of gas detection that would come out in the event that there was any electrical fire or electrical burning wires or anything of that sort. So I just wanted to get on record to correct that.
I think the fundamental thing is to understand that along with that U L listing, that the tests that they do are, are pretty impressive. We've seen photos. And I, I know that lithium batteries make people think of, of pretty dramatic fires, but because of the controls and because of the construction and because of the design of the U L listed units, they basically self extinguish. There, there does, the, when you look at the fire test photos, if you're looking for something dramatic, you're going to be disappointed because it smokes a little bit. And that, that's basically the end.
I have a question regarding post accident. When the water is dousing the batteries, whatever chemicals are in there, what if it goes into the ground? What impact does it have?
Yeah, there's, there's some information. There's some MSDS information and some burn test informations in that, in that pack. So the, in, in the information, in the application packet.
Yeah, there, there's testing information in the application packet. William, it's in the, it's in the binder.
Green binder.
Yeah. The green binder with the green cover.
Yep.
But, but the short answer is that it's pretty much the same as, as a fire on any other kind of, of commercial property. You get the same kinds of, of compounds in the smoke and in the water.
But you don't have this many batteries and the chemicals that are in it in a commercial setting?
Right.
I, I have an idea here. And since none of us on the board or the consultants are probably experts in this particular matter, would be who's the village to hire its own consultant, who's an expert on this, paid for by the applicant.
I do have another question regarding safety around the perimeter. What is preventing anyone from driving tractor trailer loaded with whatever explosives and going ramming right into it?
We do have some bollards. Barbara, if you wouldn't mind zooming in a little bit, there are some bollards around the immediate west, north, eastern side of the site around the electrical equipment. That's something that we can look at installing, you know, along the, along part, part of the perimeter as well. We try to keep it consistent with what's around other similar utility infrastructure. So again, we don't see too many bollards over there, but that's something, you know, to enhance the security, we can look to increase the amount.
You know, can I go back to the comment just prior about the fact that the village should have our own independent consultant, the applicant should pay for it? That should be the next step. We should hear what our, our expert says based upon their own independent review. And then we should use that as a basis for any further questions or additional conditions that we might want if we were to approve it. But I think that now, I, I think the village needs their own independent review, and that really should be where we should be focused on instead of going around in circles. And then we can hopefully use that criteria to help complete the hearing and then make a informed decision.
Yes, Scott, we, we agree with that.
Okay. So may I make suggestion that maybe we should just, that should be our next step here?
Sounds like a plan, although I still, since if anybody from the public is waiting around after 11 to talk about this, we should let them do that.
And open it.
Oh, okay.
I'll open a public hearing right now, if that's okay.
Yes, that's a good idea.
I'll make a motion, open a public hearing.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unopposed. Okay.
Um, hang on, I'm just looking. If anyone would like to speak, please raise your hand or type in the chat. I will say I did get one phone call that someone was surprised we had a meeting tonight because I guess it's Purim. And I explained that we go by the federal calendar. And if they had any concerns, they could send me an email with any questions or something to be read in the record, but I did not receive anything. And that was the only call I received.
Okay. Well, in honor of Purim, I am in Tasha today. I'm just, I'm just disclosing that.
Or Eve.
Alright, now, seeing as there's nobody else, we continue the public hearing next month?
I think that it's too soon to be started because we should probably give it a little more time so that we can find the expert, they can make time to develop some kind of a report. And then that would be provided to us prior to the next meeting. It should be distributed to everyone, obviously including the applicant. And then we should use that as a basis for our discussions for the next time. So I think one month is probably not enough to adjourn this. We probably need at least two.
Okay. And who's, who's charged with finding this consultant?
You.
I knew you were going to say that.
I knew you knew I was going to say that. That's why I said it.
Suzanne, Eve and I can assist.
I was going to say, you probably have the most experience, Valerie. Okay.
Um, we also, the board also needs to, to declare, I mean, to a notice of intent to be lead agency.
Well, let's deal with the public hearing first.
Okay.
So I guess May, April, May?
May was probably a smart move, would be May.
Okay, so that would be May. Okay, so, uh, that would be May, um, let's see, D R C. May 27th is, is the meeting.
May 27th, wow, it's already summertime.
Yeah, it's always the fourth Thursday of the month for planning at 7:30.
So I'll make a motion to continue the mu, public hearing on May 27th at 7:30 P M. I assume unless we can meet in the village hall.
Right.
I'll second.
Thank you, Joe. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you.
Whoa, 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 we're not done, and I have a couple of things to say after the meeting. Sorry.
Scott, do we need anything in writing from the applicant?
Or?
I would, that was one of my questions.
Confirming that they agree to this, uh.
Well, I heard the applicant said that they would be, I heard the, uh.
The applicant's already agreed.
He did, Mr. Clark did agree.
Yeah, we can, we can enter, if you need a short agreement ring to, um, put an escrow for that consultant, that's fine.
Yeah, we'll get somebody, we'll get somebody out to, to, to it, no problem.
And, Saker, Valerie?
Yes.
Is this unlisted? Type one?
It's, well, it's an, it's an unlisted action. Yes, so then it would be noticed that you just need to vote tonight for notice of intent to be lead agency.
So I'll make a motion.
Begin a circular.
The planning board, the village of Aramite Lead Agency receaper.
Second.
Philip, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None.
Just, uh, one last question. If the consultant is able to get the report back, and for some reason, we all have that information. It just like it to be possible to be moved up to April, I mean, since we pushed this out.
Um, if you do, I, you would have to just renotice and repost and readvertise.
Okay.
That would be my only thing I would think.
You probably want to see what else is on the agenda.
Well, yeah, right now, I don't know.
Yeah, I would discourage that because just, we should, everyone to have the appropriate time to read everything and prepare ourselves, you know, just. Applicant wants to ride away, but we want to do it very carefully and thoroughly, so we should stick with that May date. That should be our date, okay.
Is there anything that can be done with any of the variances in the zoning board, C B A? And in parallel, just assuming that things would continue, because I think there's some timing on that that's, it's pretty key.
Why is there an urgency?
Really? That's what I was thinking.
Orange and Rockland's need is pretty, I don't want to say dire, but it is pretty critical. So we were on a timeline to get this installed by next summer, or next spring, excuse me.
Our, our need to protect our residents is more critical. With power needs.
Interesting. I think that we, it's typical for a zoning application to be able to, you know, uh, go in parallel with the planning process and zoning process, so. You know, if we, if we meet the submission deadlines, maybe we can have that conversation with the, the village at that, at that point.
Of course, I'd be, I would not be opposed to that, as long as you know you're doing it at your own risk.
Absolutely. Right. I mean, as long as you can confirm which, what's the variances we need, and we think we do know that, Suzanne. I, I'm just suggesting it's, it, it doesn't, uh, of course, guarantee an approval, but it, it, there are so many steps and we, we spend quite a bit of time already with, uh, with the C D R C, so. I'm just trying to keep it going.
Well, the zoning meetings are the second Tuesday, that's, I'm sorry, second Thursday of the month. And, um. Well, you wouldn't make March a love, there's April 8th and May 14th.
No, Suzanne?
What?
Don't we have to refer them and don't we need to know what?
The only other way that I'm aware of, and Valerie, you're the expert at this, is what we, we, I've only know that it's been done once before is it's an uncoordinated review.
Right, I was going to say this, zoning board can't make any determination till secret's complete.
Application, that was the only.
I understood. We just wanted to be able to have our initial meeting with the C B A and get the application before them and start the process, but absolutely agree that they cannot make a determination before, uh, secret determinations made.
Okay.
Okay.
Early.
Thank you.
Thank you.
By planning board, stay on, I just have a couple of things to say. If you have two seconds, um, please keep your plans for 282 because that was their submission. So hold on to them for the next month's meeting, please. Um. I don't know if you've all been looking at your emails, but I did send, um, Valerie's response to the secret comments for the Hillside, um, Avenue discussion we had at the last meeting. I also sent the plans we received. They're appearing before the planning board uh, in the town of Ramapo on March 9th. So if anyone has comments for me to send on behalf of the village, please send them to me. And I will also ask Duncan Donuts to submit hard copies of what they submitted electronically this week and get those to everyone. And for those that need recertification, there is, uh, case law two. Arlene Miller sent something around. It is on Monday, March 1st, seven to nine via Zoom. So if you need to, uh, get recertified or need to credits, uh, please sign up. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Suzanne.
Adjourn the meeting.
Thank you, Suzanne.
Okay.
Second night.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Good night.
Good night, everyone.
Thanks, everyone.
Good night, take care.
Good night, all.
Good night.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Go plug your car in.
Have a good night.